If the Zoom host could please confirm webinar is running. All right, I got that. Thank you. Good afternoon and welcome to today's hybrid New York City Council hearing for the Committee on Technology jointly with the Subcommittee on Zoning and Franchises. To minimize disruptions, please place all electronic devices to vibrator silent mode. If you'd like to submit testimony, please send via email to testimony@council.myc.gov. Again, that is testimony@council.myc.gov. Thank you for your cooperation, Chairs Gutierrez and Riley. We are ready to begin.
Good afternoon. I'm Councilmember Gutierrez and I'm the Chair of the Committee on Technology. I'm happy to join my colleague Chair Kevin Riley in holding this joint hearing on broadband and equal access to the Internet in New York City. The COVID-19 pandemic and our ongoing recovery from its impacts have made it abundantly clear what was already deeply understood by so many. The Internet is a crucial pillar of modern society and access to the Internet is no longer a luxury. It is vital to be able to participate and succeed in our society. Our most vulnerable communities, including the low-income and the elderly, are the most likely to lack a high-speed home Internet connection, if they even have Internet access at all. In the fall of 2020, up to 13% of DOE students lacked access to adequate Internet. And despite DOE's distribution of devices so that students could access learning remotely, a significant number of students were still unable to log on and continue their education. New York City cannot allow these inequities to continue, especially as we continue to see more city services accessible primarily through the Internet. Past city efforts have taken aim at the problem of under-connected New Yorkers, including the Internet Master Plan released in January 2020. The Internet Master Plan's guiding principles were anchored in five areas: equity, performance, affordability, privacy, and choice. This initiative sought to reorient the city's approach to broadband access, most importantly through an equity lens. This plan prioritized open-access infrastructure so that multiple broadband service providers could more easily and cost-effectively deliver their services through city-owned channels, which could then result in cheaper and more widely available high-quality Internet. In addition, the Internet Master Plan established a citywide goal around broadband deployment, a need that became increasingly urgent when the COVID-19 pandemic revealed just how vital and dependable Internet connection was and how many New Yorkers were in need. The Internet Master Plan was celebrated by advocates, tech, and government media outlets, and New Yorkers all across our city. In the summer of 2021, then-Mayor Bill de Blasio announced $157 million in city capital investment for their express purpose of advancing the implementation of the Internet Master Plan. However, recent reporting, including testimony from Tech Committee hearings just this year, has indicated that the plan is currently under review and its related initiatives consequently have stopped. At halted, excuse me. And last week, the U.S. Census released data that showed that hundreds of thousands of New Yorkers today still do not have access to the Internet of any type. New Yorkers should not have to worry about having access to a dependable Internet connection. As such, the committee looks forward to hearing the updated status of the Internet Master Plan and its related initiatives. We understand that there are broadband initiatives that have recently been initiated by this administration, including Big Apple Connect, Big Apple Announcement this morning. Understanding the details of these new programs, their current phases of implementation, as well as additional plans this administration has for New York City's broadband connectivity, will be an important step toward collaboration in the process of equitably expanding broadband access throughout the five boroughs. It's important that this implementation happen quickly and equitably. With this in mind, we will consider the following bills in the Technology Committee today. Intro number 112, sponsored by Councilmember Holden, which would require Do-It to create an online portal containing information related to franchise agreements for the provision of cable television services. Intro number 440, sponsored by Councilmember Juan, which would require the Office of Operations, the Office of Cyber Command, and Do-It to establish a program for city agencies to provide Wi-Fi to the public. Intro number 599, sponsored by Councilmember Juan, which would require Do-It to develop written materials containing information on affordable Internet programs available to students and families in the city to be distributed to students at every school at the beginning of every cycle of every school year. And intro number 241, sponsored by myself, which would require Do-It in consultation with the DOE to purchase and distribute mobile hotspots devices to all New York City Public School students. We hope that New York City continues to be a standard bearer for progress, which includes technological advances. But forward advancement means nothing if we are leaving New Yorkers behind. We must ensure that we expand the ability of all New Yorkers to access the Internet and participate in modern society. The digital divide that exists today creates significant gaps in access to essential resources and opportunities and often functions as digital redlining. Any municipal effort requires partnership and cooperation. But especially with New York City's ability to bring more New Yorkers online, we are intent on working together with this administration, community leaders, advocates, and industry to achieve this goal. We look forward to hearing the specifics of this administration's broadband efforts, as well as testimony from experts and advocates to learn more about what can be done to expand broadband access in New York City. I would like to recognize the following members of the Tech Committee who are present with us today: Councilmembers Julie Wan, Councilmember Bob Holden. And I'd also like to recognize Councilmembers Gail Brewer, Councilmember Julie Menon, and of course our Chair Riley. I'll now turn it over to Councilmember Riley for his opening statement.
Thank you, Chair. Good afternoon, everyone. I am Councilmember Kevin Riley, Chair of the Subcommittee on Zoning and Franchises. I am pleased to be joined by Councilmember Jennifer Gutierrez, Chair of the Committee on Technology, to hear a very important topic. The COVID-19 pandemic has shone the spotlight on inequality in practically every sector of society. Access to broadband Internet for work and school is essential for the city's recovery for the pandemic. But broadband is still not evenly distributed across New York City and affordability is a high barrier for the over 13% of households without a home Internet connection and those who must rely on only a smartphone for their Internet services. Broadband Internet is particularly important for New York City, public school students who rely on the Internet as they do their homework and assignments, even as schools have returned in-person in classes. The Internet Master Plan was released in January 2020 under the previous mayoral administration, right before the onset of the COVID-19 pandemic. To expand broadband access for New Yorkers, today I look forward to hearing about and discussing the progress the city has made in the expansion, as well as the next steps the current administration planned as it works to ensure Internet connectivity for all New Yorkers. I would like to thank the Chair and my colleagues in government who produced amazing legislation today. I'm looking forward to hearing from the administration. Thank you, Chair.
I'd also like to recognize Councilmember David Carr, who's joining us this afternoon.
Want to introduce?
I'm going to introduce Councilmember Bob Holden for his remarks.
Okay, thank you, Chair. In the interest of transparency, intro 112 would require the Department of Information Technology and Telecommunications to create and maintain an online portal containing information related to franchise agreements for the provision of cable television services. The public will easily be able to view, and that's hopefully a view, the best available data on rates for any broadband Internet services offered by franchises separated by broadband, technology, speed, and zip code. When a contract ends, Do-It will state how many years the contract lasted, the rates of service, and additional relevant information. The bill requires all franchise agreements signed after 2006 to be posted in a searchable, machine-readable format. Transparency builds trust and credibility in institutions. The public should be able to understand city contracts and how we do business as a city. My bill is a step in this direction, and I want to thank the Chairs. But I just also want to say that you just can't list the contracts, all right? Because that's 50, 60, 100 pages. So you have to summarize it and make it where somebody can compare. And that's what this bill does. Not, I know in your testimony you're going to say, "We have that." Yeah, you have 100 pages for each contract that nobody can decipher, and nobody will. Let's do a comparison, let's summarize it, you know, for everyday use and not for somebody who's going to read 100 and something pages. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Holden. I'd also like to recognize Councilmember Hanks, who's joining us over Zoom this afternoon.
And thank you, Chair. Good afternoon, everyone. And next, we'll hear testimony from the administration. And we have Brad Seikoff, the Executive Director of Mobile Telecom Franchise, and Chantel Senatus, the General Counsel of OTI.
Good afternoon, Chairs Gutierrez and Riley, and members, excuse me, of the City Council Committee on Technology and the Subcommittee on Zoning and Franchises. My name is Brett Seikoff, and I am the Executive Director of Franchise Administration for the Office of Technology and Innovation, or OTI. Here with me today, Associate Commissioner and Acting General Counsel Chantel Senatus. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today on one of OTI's largest priorities: equitable broadband access. OTI, under the leadership of Chief Technology Officer Matthew Frazier, oversees several initiatives to bring broadband access to historically underserved communities. We believe not having reliable, affordable access to broadband severely limits large segments of the population from fully participating in society. Internet access is not a luxury, but a necessity akin to a utility. The pandemic brought the digital divide into focus, laying bare the gaps in learning and productivity for those who did not have the access at their fingertips. The city's broadband strategy and approach has benefited from the consolidation of the city's technology offices under the broader OTI umbrella. Under my team, we have brought together the city's franchise authority, previously under legacy Do-It, and have aligned it with the mission to support ubiquitous broadband adoption, previously under legacy MACTO. We have been able to take a more holistic view of existing programs, contracts, and franchises, and account for where gaps remain. Further, we can continue to move the ball forward in bringing in more Internet service providers to give New Yorkers affordable and reliable service, while also considering short-term solutions that address this urgent need. That is why earlier today, Mayor Adams and CTO Frazier announced the launch of Big Apple Connect, a program that will make free, high-speed Internet and basic cable TV available to approximately 300,000 New Yorkers living in more than 200 NYCHA developments by the end of 2023. Today, more than 100 developments' residents are eligible for this new benefit. Once its rollout is completed, Big Apple Connect is projected to be the largest municipal program to cover the cost of Internet for public housing residents. This program will provide residents of NYCHA developments a free offering that consists of in-home, high-speed Internet, basic cable TV service, and common-area Wi-Fi hotspots selected in consultation with NYCHA. To get results in a short timeframe, we decided to request proposals from existing New York City cable television franchisees, all of whom already have infrastructure throughout NYCHA, nearly eliminating the need for additional capital investment with the ability to quickly deliver services. In the last few years, we have entered into three-year agreements, excuse me, in the last few months, we have entered into three-year agreements for a bulk purchase of services at a low price with Altice Optimum and Charter Spectrum. These two companies will collectively cover the majority of developments owned and managed by NYCHA. The city is continuing to negotiate with Verizon, which has a citywide cable television franchise. In addition to making this available within the year, our goal is to make enrollment in the program as seamless as possible. Existing eligible customers of Altice, Optimum, and Charter Spectrum living in NYCHA developments will automatically be enrolled in the program and will only be billed for additional services they choose to purchase directly. Customers will receive email notifications and mailers explaining why their bills were lowered, as well as information on Big Apple Connect. Residents without existing service will be able to reach out to the companies directly or can sign up during onsite enrollment events conducted by the companies in partnership with OTI. The program began in a pilot phase available at eight developments across all five boroughs, including Mott Haven and Patterson in the Bronx, Langston Hughes in Brownsville in Brooklyn, Polo Grounds in Manhattan, Queensbridge and Woodside in Queens, and Stapleton in Staten Island. The next phase of sites selected are available on nyc.gov/bigappleconnect. Big Apple Connect is meant to be complementary to the existing Affordable Connectivity Program, or ACP. This federal program provides eligible households with the $30 a month benefit toward Internet service. Although it is not possible to use the ACP benefit and Big Apple Connect for in-home broadband service, all eligible households will have the opportunity to apply ACP to cellular data servers. For as long as ACP is available, OTI will continue to promote and support its adoption. We appreciate that the council has taken many steps to partner with organizations to bring awareness to the program and help residents sign up for ACP across the city. Supported programs to provide low- or no-cost broadband is one of many strategies OTI oversees. The city must enable ubiquitous fiber infrastructure in order for these services to be provided, at the core of many of the broadband services with which the committees may be familiar, are franchises. A franchise is a contract that allows the use of the city's rights of way, our streets, sidewalks, and other public assets to deliver services to the public in exchange for franchise fees. In other words, the city grants a limited right to use these valuable assets and in return receives much-needed revenue. The New York City Council plays a crucial role in the franchise process by passing authorizing resolutions that allow us to solicit and enter into franchise agreements. OTI administers several franchises, including cable television, public communication structures, mobile telecommunications, and information services. It is important to note that although the cable television franchisees Charter, Altice, and Verizon all also provide broadband services, the franchise agreements are limited to the provision of cable television to the extent required by federal law. Link NYC remains a cornerstone of the broadband offerings provided via franchise agreement. Nearly 2,000 kiosks have been deployed in all five boroughs, reaching over 11.8 million subscribers. Recently, we unveiled Link 5G, the newly-designed kiosk that provides all the same amenities as the original Link: free Wi-Fi, NYCHA-wide calling, device charging, quick access to 911 and government services, with the added benefit of multi-tenant 5G. We continue to work with the franchisee, City Bridge, to bring more links to underserved areas in the outer boroughs and above 96th Street over the coming years. In addition to Link 5G, my team administers mobile telecommunications franchises. These franchises allow companies to build 4G and 5G equipment on light poles and utility poles. Through this franchise, mobile carriers are able to enhance and densify their cellular networks, providing crucial service to anyone who owns a cellphone. More recently, we have provided incentives for these companies to build their equipment in historically underserved areas of the city, ensuring that mobile coverage is equitable. Finally, information services franchises are held by companies that install and operate fiber-optic cable in city streets for the purpose of offering or supporting voice, data, and/or business-to-business Internet service across five boroughs. In the past year, the city has entered into 10 of these franchises, and we continue to consider qualified companies on a rolling basis. These companies' fiber build provides the foundation for more broadband companies to enter the marketplace, with the hope that more competition will result in lower prices. While we cannot direct the franchisees precisely where to build, we have put incentives in place to encourage build outside of the Manhattan Core, similarly to our other franchises. We know that building the foundation for broadband and providing the means to access it is not enough, which is why OTI also funds and administers Connected Communities, a long-term, large-scale digital inclusion initiative that provides digital literacy and employment resources in historically underserved areas for thousands of New Yorkers every year. In partnership with New York City Parks Media Education Labs, the Department for the Aging's Older Adult Centers, NYCHA's Digital Van Program, and the city's three library systems, Connected Communities underwrites over 100 public sites to enable the critical delivery of devices, software, mobile hotspots, and over 24,000 hours annually of high-quality digital literacy programs that help New Yorkers gain essential skills. I will now quickly turn to the legislation being considered today. Intro 112, sponsored by Councilmember Holden, would require OTI to post information on our website related to cable franchise agreements. We recently updated our website and do provide information about the cable franchises. We continue to improve it and keep content fresh, and we'll be happy to take feedback from council on this page in particular. Next, intro 241, sponsored by Chair Gutierrez, would require OTI, in consultation with the Department of Education, to provide all students with mobile hotspots. While we are all too familiar with the struggles that students faced during the height of the COVID-19 pandemic, it is our understanding that students in need may already be able to request devices directly from DOE. During the time period of remote instruction, DOE acquired over 700,000 mobile data-enabled devices and approximately 30,000 hotspots that were distributed to schools for use as needed. DOE continues to have a process in place for school to ask for device needs as necessary. Procuring mobile hotspot devices to all students would be a sizable investment in both hardware and monthly service fees. More discussion is needed to determine where the gaps remain to ensure that any large investment is benefiting those who need it most. Councilmember Wan's bill, intro 440, would require OTI to establish a program whereby city agencies provide wireless network access for the public to utilize the Internet. We appreciate the spirit of this proposal, which appears to seek to leverage current Wi-Fi networks for public use. Upon review of the bill text, it remains unclear whether the proposal seeks to provide service to an agency's walk-in customers or to the general public. Further, the capabilities of an agency to provide this service is highly dependent on numerous factors and may require significant infrastructure investments. We'd like to discuss further what the sponsor envisions with this bill, considering the operational and fiscal implications as currently written. And lastly, intro 599, also sponsored by Councilmember Juan, would require OTI to provide written materials about affordable Internet for wide-ranging outreach to students and families. OTI cares deeply about promoting low- or no-cost broadband service to those most in need. And we appreciate the council's focus on educating students and their families about the programs that are available to them. We have collaborated with DOE to promote ACP in the past and would like to discuss with DOE and the council additional strategies to better get the word out about current offerings and identify which programs would be appropriate to promote. I'm now happy to take Councilmember's questions.
Thank you for your testimony. I'd also like to recognize Councilmember Palladino from our Tech Committee. My first question is regarding the Internet Master Plan. It was announced in January of 2020, and the announcement for Internet Master Plan was announced back in 2020, and $157 million were allocated towards the plan as a capital investment into 2021. How much of this money has been spent?
Thanks, Councilmember, for the question. So the Internet Master Plan, which ultimately birthed this RFP that was issued, considered a lot of the core tenets of what this administration is interested in, which is expanding broadband, expanding fiber infrastructure, and diversifying the marketplace. As this administration came in, we took a hard look at the master plan to see where there are duplications of not just fiber infrastructure around the city, but duplication of money that's being spent elsewhere in other programs. So while we take that look and we continue to do so, it's one of the real reasons why we came up with the Big Apple Connect program, because we wanted an immediate solution to the problems that we all acknowledge persist and have persisted for far too long. So while the master plan contemplated a multi-year-long and a very expensive $157 million investment, Big Apple Connect will help citizens immediately. Hundreds of thousands of citizens, tens of thousands of households will immediately get service, and we're going to continue to explore what opportunities in the master plan can be leveraged for use going forward.
So, but what amount of the original $157 million have been spent? Has any of that money gone towards Big Apple Connect?
No, it has not. Big Apple Connect is being funded through other sources. That's going to be part of a budget plan moving forward. But the money for the Internet Master Plan remains, and we're just considering what is the appropriate path forward.
So it's untouched at this point, because, okay.
To my understanding, yes.
Okay. During the April 2021 hearing on updates to the Internet Master Plan, former CTO John Paul Farmer testified that in May of 2021, CTO would review proposals from the universal solicitation for broadband RFP received from Internet service providers and begin negotiations on the process of licensing city assets. Where are we now in this process?
So the very first phase, I believe, of the master plan is already in progress. So that's, those are these RFEI vendors that some of you may be familiar with.
But just to clarify, can you just clarify what the RFEIs are for?
Yeah, sure. So it's for providing service to NYCHA residents at various NYCHA facilities using fixed wireless different solutions. So it's a way to give access, there was no cost to the city. It's a way to provide access to small, local, MWBE providers. And so they're already in progress. They're building out. They're expanding their service to those NYCHA developments that they cover.
And can you tell us the current status of the universal solicitation for broadband RFP?
So that, to my understanding, is that's part of the master plan, and that's all being considered to be reevaluated.
So still also on hold?
Correct.
I'd also like to recognize Councilmembers Eric Bacher and Councilmember Francisco Moya joining us. Now, you said in your first response that the Big Apple... City?
Connect. Big Apple Connect.
I can't help but want to say something else. Big Apple Connect was that we needed immediate solutions. However, I am concerned because administration to administration often goes into these big investment projects, kind of doing a very reactive, very like something that we need right now. A big part of the Internet Master Plan was to really be comprehensive. All major cities engage in an Internet Master Plan. There's no reason why our city should not be working through this in earnest. What can you tell me is the main reason that the master plan has been or is on pause? And can you tell us what the timeline is for it to be reactivated?
So when the master plan was devised and going back a couple of years now, it wasn't very, there were a number of agencies that were considered. Do-It, the legacy Do-It, was not one of them. It was very much done outside of the Do-It sphere because of all the other programs that we're doing, expanding the information services franchise opportunities. A lot of the fiber infrastructure has been increased since that plan was in place, and we're concerned about duplication of efforts. So duplication of new fiber, duplication of money being spent on the same stuff.
But duplication because of the new initiative?
Not just Big Apple Connect, but all the other things we're doing, expanding Link NYC, like I said, the information services franchise. All that is already in motion, and because of the considerable investment proposed in the Internet Master Plan, we thought it was prudent to take a really hard look at it to see, to make sure that it's being surgically applied. And we, as you said, a lot of other cities have an Internet Master Plan, and we intend to unveil a plan moving forward. But for now, we want to, there's an immediate need for services. NYCHA is just one area. There's other segments of the population that are in need of additional broadband, not just in NYCHA. But there's an obvious need for service there, and using the existing providers to provide the service, given that there's infrastructure already in place, we can stop the bleeding. We can get the service to the people where it's needed most, and also look at intermediate and long-term plans for moving forward.
Right. I hear that. I think I can appreciate, obviously, that we want to be mindful of where there is duplication. But I do want to keep bringing it back to the Internet Master Plan, because I think, again, it's crucial that we consider to look at this comprehensively. I do know that according to the Internet Master Plan, the city will enable service delivery by supporting and promoting the use of new shared infrastructure that meet the city's broadband standards for equity, performance, affordability, privacy, and choice. What are the standards for equity, performance, affordability, privacy, and choice that the agency had in mind, and how would those standards be met? And could you also just elaborate on privacy and choice standards?
Yeah. Well, given that the plan was devised under the previous administration, under a different agency. Yeah, no, everything you described is obviously essential, right? I mean, it's generic. It's important, not to suggest that it's not. So certainly it is, and anything we do moving forward will stick to those basic tenets. But in terms of choice, really, it's about diversifying the marketplace. We have the existing cable companies that are largely our Internet service providers, Altice, Charter, and Verizon. Getting a diverse set of companies that can compete with them, that can do it at affordable price, at affordable rates, is essential to anything we do moving forward. So Big Apple Connect, while one, obviously, very important step in the right direction, there's other opportunities for expanding to identify those smaller companies. And what I mentioned earlier about the RFEI, we are moving forward with those companies. They're Silicon Harlem, Sky Pockets, Starry. They're all actively providing service and will continue to support them to the extent we can and grow those companies.
Were there duplicate applicants that applied to the RFEI and the Internet Master Plan RFP?
That I don't know. I can look into that.
Okay. And so, and I just want to confirm what you just said, that there is the intention of this agency to continue with any of the smaller providers that apply to the RFEI. But Big Apple Connect right now is currently working with which providers?
Big Apple Connect is working with the cable companies, the Charter and Altice, because, again, that's where the infrastructure is. There was no construction required. Just a matter of working with them and the communities to turn up the service. They will not be duplicating the efforts of the RFEI. The RFEI vendors, the developments that they're working in, will not intersect with Big Apple Connect, at least for the time being. So we encourage those companies to continue to deploy, continue to provide the great low-cost service that they're currently deploying.
So in theory, either with Big Apple Connect or the RFEI designations, all NYCHA residents will have access?
That's the plan, yeah. That's the plan, yeah.
Okay. In a previous testimony, John Paul Farmer mentioned that the most internet service provider, that most internet service providers collect data on their customers. Such data can include IP addresses, browsing histories, and other sensitive information. Are data collection and providers' data, uh, data collection policy factors you consider when reviewing proposals from ISPs, whether for universal broadband, Big Apple Connect, and connecting NITIA to other initiatives?
So yeah, so data privacy, of course, is paramount for the city. We've recently expanded our privacy and security efforts. I would note, though, and turn it over to Chantel as well, our cable franchises are limited to cable TV service. Our franchise agreements, as written, are limited to their ability to provide cable television service. So anything where it goes into the broadband, we have limited authority. Pursuant to federal law, and Chantel, if you want to.
Excellent. Thank you. Good afternoon, Councilmembers.
Good afternoon.
So just to talk a little bit more about privacy, with respect to the agreements that we have with Charter and LTs, and we follow a general process with respect to OTI's formerly Do-Its contracts, where there are writers associated with maintaining privacy in, in a way that comports with not revealing city data and keeping people's personal information private for the purposes of providing the work for the city.
Okay. Can you share a little bit more about what those standards look like that are built in to ensure privacy for New Yorkers?
I mean, I have to get back to you with respect to the specifics. There are writers attached to our contracts that I could make available to you.
Yeah, I think, I would love it. I think it's important for folks to know what that looks like. I kind of want to go back to the RFEI and Big Apple Connect. So I'm curious, what was the decision? If there was a difference in urgency between those developments that would be covered by the RFEI versus Big Apple Connect, what was the, what was the rubric or the matrix utilized to select those developments? I just would love to know a little bit more. This is all, you know, this is brand-new information as of a few hours ago. So if you could share a little bit more.
Yeah, so the hundred and, I believe it's twenty-seven developments that are announced today for the Big Apple Connect program that are made available to residents there represent a cross-section of the city from all five boroughs, developments big and small, some are individual buildings. So we, we thought we got a diverse, like I said, cross-section of the city. The RFEI vendors, those NITIA developments have been assigned to them for some time, so they've been providing service and continue to build out at those locations. So we think we have a good representation. And as announced today, there'll be additional developments announced in twenty twenty-three as we, as we continue to expand the program for Big Apple Connect.
I wanted to ask about, I don't know if you can speak to this, but I'm aware that people who worked on the Internet Master Plan back in twenty twenty are still part of the, uh, the new agency. I understand that they're, some of them might be under strategic initiatives. Is that, is that correct? Are there still folks that were working on the master plan still a part of OTI?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Are any of them here today?
I do not believe so.
Great, okay. Did your office review the proposals received by the internet service providers submitted as a response to the universal solicitation for broadband RFP process?
That I would have to get back to you on.
Okay. And did any of these proposals include bulk purchasing options?
Sorry, I have to get back to you.
Okay, my last question before I pass it off to Chair Riley. On June first, twenty twenty-two, Gotham is reported that an official spokesperson for the Office of Technology and Innovation stated that the broadband policy for the city would be focusing on, quote, "more near-term solutions." Can you please provide examples of these near-term solutions and your expected timeline for implementing them?
Well, first and foremost is, is Big Apple Connect. That was, you know, that's obviously a huge announcement today. It covers a lot of New Yorkers who need the service, who need it right now. And as of today, folks who couldn't afford internet service are going to get it for free. Folks who are paying exorbitant rates, and we recognize that some of the rates have gone up over the years. Will be able to get their service for free or cut their bills dramatically. So that, first and foremost, is our, you know, big announcement. And then, as we said, we're continuing to evaluate the master plan to see where there's opportunities to provide additional service.
And then can you also just verify the duration, the intended duration of the Big Apple?
Connect.
Gosh, connect. Does anybody else want to say circus? Is it just me? I'm really trying to be better. Um, is, just to confirm, is that a duration of three years?
It's a three-year contract, correct.
Okay, and so what happens after three years?
Well, we'll continue to evaluate as, as we do everything holistically, what's working, what's not working, what we can improve on, and we'll consider all options.
Okay. I do have some questions about funding that I'm gonna, I'm gonna hold off. I just have a couple of questions about your testimony. You mentioned that there would also be wifi hotspots selected in consultation with NITIA. I'm deeply concerned, NITIA is not an authority that I think is famous for their ability to really like engage with tenants. So can you explain a little bit about what that, what, what does that process look like? And who are the professionals at NITIA that are going to be working with you on hotspot selection?
Thank you for that question, and I should have clarified earlier. So as part of Big Apple Connect and the agreements we've signed with those cable companies, they are required to build out wifi hotspots to strategically placed locations within the development. So community centers, rec centers, laundry rooms, wherever, wherever we think that they'll get a good use. So that's where, when we talk about working with NITIA, we're going to work with them, people on the ground, the tenant association presidents, property managers, other NITIA staff to identify the locations that are best suited for, for those hotspots.
Great. I would love to continue just to touch base with you all on what those interactions look like and that they really are meaningful. Okay, thank you. So I'm going to pass it off to Chair Riley.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. Just to piggyback off of NITIA, thank you so much for your testimony today. According to your depression through Big Apple Connect, NITIA residents will have free internet and basic cable. And through the NITIA RFP, NITIA residents will have internet access and will be assisted with applying for discounted service packages provided through the Federal Affordable Connectivity Program. How do you envision the service rendered by the NITIA RFP and Big Apple Connect to coexist? And do you foresee them overlapping?
Thanks for your question, Chair Riley. So we thought very carefully about how to ensure that they do not overlap. We don't want to expend money and, and city, city money on areas where there is duplication of efforts. So with respect to the RFEI vendors who are providing the service today, they're providing service, I believe it's about fifteen dollars per month, which is offset by the federal, federal Affordable Connectivity or ACP benefit. So we continue to promote the program, the federal program, which is in effect for as long as there's funding available, so that residents who get the service are able to get it essentially for free. So we know that there's been a number of council members who have been on the ground at, at certain locations throughout the city to get folks to sign up for the service, and, and we encourage them to do so. We provide, provide information on our website and we can continue to get the word out as it relates to the RFEI, the developments assigned to the RFEI program. With respect to Big Apple Connect, we're going to be on the ground, working with communities. We recently created a, a community engagement manager position so that we have one-on-one contacts with all tenant association presidents, with property managers, and we're attending community board, excuse me, community council meetings with, with all the TA presidents to get the word out, to make sure folks understand what the program is, what it isn't, what, uh, what the benefits are available to them. And, and if they're in an RFEI development, what those benefits are as well. So we, we think we have a comprehensive strategy for getting the information out to the, to the folks who need it.
What percentages of NITIA residents currently have free or low-cost broadband in their units as a result of the NITIA RFP and Big Apple Connect? And could you please tell us more about these programs and their current status?
Sure. So as of today, prior to the announcement, we had a pilot at a number of, at eight developments throughout the five boroughs for Big Apple Connect. There are about seven thousand enrollees so far. Folks who either had existing service, who converted to the free service, or folks who had nothing whatsoever and have been able to sign on. So we're really encouraged by those numbers and we're going to continue to seek to grow those, particularly as new developments come under the program. And as it relates to the RFEI vendors who are also building out and expanding their service, they're providing various types of solutions. So some are doing fixed wireless, some are doing wireless in-unit, uh, excuse me, fiber to the unit to get service inside there. Some are doing common area wifi. I don't have numbers with me in terms of the subscriptions to those vendors as yet, but we're going to, as part of this program, we're going to comprehensively look at who's adopting, who's, you know, areas where we need to do a little bit more to, to identify those without service and make sure they get connected with one of these programs.
Thank you. The IMP, according to the previous CTO, planned to prioritize MWBE businesses and small service providers when awarding contracts. Does the current administration plan to continue this commitment?
Absolutely. Which is, again, one of the main reasons why we, those developments where those small companies, the MWEs, the local companies are building out, we wanted to leave them to do what they're doing, the great work that they're doing there, and see where there's opportunities to expand.
Will at some point all NITIA buildings be covered under your current programs and will, or will some buildings be prioritized?
So we prioritize a number of buildings just for this first round through twenty twenty-two. We fully expect that, if not all, then most NITIA developments that are owned and managed by NITIA will be covered under this program.
And this pilot program, the Langston Hughes Houses in Brooklyn, Brownsville Houses in Brooklyn, Mount Haven Houses in the Bronx, Passon Houses in the Bronx, Polo Ground Towers in Harlem, Queens Bridge Houses in Queens, Woodside Houses in Queens, and Stapleton Houses in Staten Island. Why were these developments chosen for this pilot site?
Good question.
As pilot site, excuse me.
Sure. So we worked with NITIA staff to identify locations that did not have other programs in place, such as, again, those RFEIs, and were, yeah, again, represent a good cross-section of the city. So we got all the five boroughs covered. Some developments bigger, and so Langston Hughes is only three buildings. Queens Bridge, as many of you know, is enormous. So we wanted to get a sense of scale and see what adoption concerns there are, or interest from the community. And it's helping inform our steps move forward.
What will be the internet services uploading and download speeds be for these buildings? And are service speeds defined in your contract terms?
They sure are. So for Charter and, uh, excuse me, Altis contracts, they're a minimum of three hundred megabits per second for download. And they're very, with respect to the upload, so I believe it's fifteen megabits per second for one, and the other one, I believe, is going to be three hundred symmetrical. And as part of the Altis deployment, they're also expanding their fiber presence. So as they turn on, uh, the, activate the, the customers, they're going to install and replace their coax with fiber. So it's a great opportunity to expand and improve the infrastructure that's, uh, that's there today.
What is your timeline for completing the broadband build-out in these NITIA buildings?
So the, because the build-out is essentially done, right, the infrastructure is already in place, which is one of the primary reasons why we wanted to go with the cable companies to immediately fix the problem. There, there really isn't a construction effort, aside from building out the wifi hotspots. It's really about awareness campaigns and communications with the communities to make sure that they know these programs are available to them. They know that it's, it's actually true. I mean, having been on the, uh, at a number of NITIA developments as, to sign up folks over these last couple of months, many people don't believe it's real, right? When you hear, you're a free program and you're just naturally skeptical, and that's understandable. So we have a considerable amount of work ahead of us to, to let the communities know that this is a real program and they should sign up.
Regarding shelters, the previous CTO mentioned family shelters as priorities for building out broadband. To your knowledge, how many shelters presently have a free or low-cost internet connection available to its residents? What is your plan, and if so, what is your plan with regard to wiring up family shelters?
So, thank you for that question. So over the last couple of years, particularly during the pandemic, we wired over two hundred family homeless shelters with wifi service, in-unit wifi service, where there was no service previously. So it's not like they had service and were just providing for free. They had no connection. So it was a pretty sizable effort. I, I'd have to get the exact number, but it's well over-
How many men's shelters did you wire up?
I don't believe that that was part of the program that included just men's shelters, but I'll have to double-check and get back to you. But it was primarily focused on family shelters to get kids who were going to school or doing work remotely to make sure that they were connected.
I just wanted to emphasize men's shelters, because we want to make sure that they get back on their feet and have access to broadband as well. So I just wanted to ask that question. To small businesses, how about small businesses? Are there any initiatives to support small businesses and assist them with their internet procurement and connectivity issues?
So we think the, the real way to do that is to ensure that, to ensure that there is pervasive broadband access and making the, you know, encouraging the marketplace to lower rates where possible will help broadband adoption. And then, as, again, as we talk about reviewing the, the Internet Master Plan and analyze that, we'll be focused on ensuring that there's available services and the prices are reasonable. So that's all part of the evaluation.
Thank you. And I just have two more questions regarding our education system. As of fall twenty twenty, between eleven percent to thirteen percent of students in each borough lacked access to the internet, even after the DOE distributed internet-connected iPads for students to use for remote learning. What percentage of students in each borough lacked access to the internet as of end of the previous school year, twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two?
It's a good question, Chair Riley, and I'll have to get back to you on the specific numbers. But, um, just, I would answer this, this way. Generally, we are trying to expand not just in-home broadband via Big Apple Connect and the programs, but also improve our 5G and cellular communications network. So part of what we do in franchise administration is allow companies to get access to streetlight poles and other infrastructure to expand their, uh, to expand their coverage and, and improve their densification. So we think that for those who lack in-home broadband, who do rely, many do, on their cellphones as their primary means of connecting to the internet, we also have to prioritize making a robust cellular communication network, particularly in the outer borough. So we think those two go hand in hand.
Thank you. Two more questions. How will you ensure that a hundred percent of students have access to the internet and devices to connect to the internet? Are you committed to ensuring a hundred percent of NYC students have access to the internet? If so, what is your timeline for achieving that? If not, why not?
It's also a good question. And, and so primarily, I would refer you to DOE for those, you know, for the planning in that respect. But I would say that it's, my understanding that students have the opportunity to request either a device or, or a mobile hotspot for their home and that DOE makes those available to them. But for specific questions, I would refer to DOE.
And lastly, is there any, uh, continue, I think you mentioned it in your statement, continued talks with Verizon to actually have them a part of this initiative, being that they have a lot of our labor union workers working for them?
Yes, absolutely. We're still in discussions with Verizon about becoming part of, of Big Apple Connect.
All right. Thank you. I really appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Right, I wanted to just follow up on a couple more of the questions that you had answered previously. Regarding the more near-term solutions, I know, obviously, the obvious answer is Big Apple Connect. I would like to hear a little bit more on some of the more long-term solutions. If you do not have a definitive timeline for the implementation of the Internet Master Plan, what are some other examples of either short-term or long-term plans that are really going to get New Yorkers connected?
Yeah, so that's exactly what we're doing at this point, is looking at those, not just long-term, right, we do look at long-term, but those intermediate. Not just today, Big Apple Connect, we're super excited about that. But what, what are we doing in the next few months, in the next year or so, and then three, four years down the line? So that's exactly what's happening today, is reevaluating the, the meat of that master plan, to see what we can leverage, what we can move forward with, what we need to improve on, and, and if anything needs to be revised, we'll go ahead and do that. But as far as that goes, that, that process is underplay, underway.
To the best of your awareness, will there also be a, um, a direct path for some of these bigger, like Charter and Altis and Verizon to continue to take the lead on some of these other initiatives? Or will we be prioritizing some of the smaller providers that applied to an RFEI, for example?
Yeah, again, diversifying the marketplace is essential. It's essential to provide competition for the big guys. It's essential to lower costs for residents. So I think that's, that's certainly a priority, is encouraging MWEs, encouraging local, small mom-and-pop, if you will, ISPs to get into the marketplace is, is going to be key.
But they have applied, is my understanding. But what I'm asking you is if the agency and the administration are ready to prioritize them in the next near-term solution initiative that will be launched?
Yeah, I mean, without committing to saying for sure that it's going to happen, that's certainly top of mind for us. But, um, yeah, we would have to explore what exactly those initiatives are before we assign them to anybody. But yes, that's, that's certainly important to us.
Thank you. And so I know that you also said that currently through Big Apple Connect, some of these applicants, these smaller ISPs, are obviously part of the conversation. Can you share a little bit more about those conversations? And when, when is the time, is there a timeline that you can share as far as when they will be integrated to the bigger project?
I don't know that there's a timeline to, ready to share at this point, but just other than those conversations are, are happening- but just other than those conversations are, are happening internally and we expect to, to make some significant progress moving forward.
Okay. Is there a particular goal of these MWB applicant, uh, providers that have applied? Is there a particular goal that you want to be included into this Big Apple Connect? Is there a number that we are trying to hit, neighborhood by neighborhood? What is, what are some of those details that you can share?
Yeah, I would just say generally, it's, it's really about, again, not to, not to say it over and over again, but it's about providing additional competition, right? And, and having additional vendors in the marketplace so that you don't only have one provider to call or two providers to call if you want an internet hookup. You'll have opportunities to get smaller companies who you may have never heard of, who may be offering a, a, a low or, or no-cost solution. That's really what it is. I mean, I've lived here my whole life, and it'd be nice, no offense to anyone there, not to just have one or two providers to call for service. We, we wanna make it available.
I think we understand that. I think what I would just like to get a sense is what, when can we expect that to happen? You know, I think there was a major announcement happening today. I know the residents in these developments are excited. But I think it's also fair for us to ask, when are these MWBS that have applied, that have already engaged with the administration and the agency, and when will they be integrated into even just this initiative? Because it's, it's a three-year program. This is, how far along are we into the three years? Because I'm, I'm unsure when it was launched.
So it was just launched this, this summer, at the end of the summer. We started the pilot, so we, we have a ways to go. But with respect to the smaller companies, it's not just Big Apple Connect. It's not just the RFI. It's our information services franchise, which we've recently awarded, I believe, 10 contracts to companies, big and small. So as they build out their infrastructure and expand service to the outer boroughs, for which we've, we've incentivized them via the franchise agreement to, uh, there's, I believe there's no fee for five years to build out, if they build out in the outer boroughs. So that means they're expanding fiber infrastructure every day, which will ultimately expand the, the offerings that are available.
I just wanna lean into the equity piece. I would hate for us to put these, these smaller applicants, these smaller providers on the back burner, especially with regard to Big Apple Connect. I would hate to, for them to be a part of it, you know, at the end of year three. I have just two more questions. This one is about the, the shelters piece. Obviously, we are aware of the emergency shelters that are, are coming up. Many are, are in our districts already and continue to open up. Is there a sense that you can share of what connectivity looks like in these? I know that many of them are hotels, but can you share if there is an analysis being done to ensure that these emergency shelters are connected? And what can you tell me about the possibility of devices being provided? As I've met with shelter residents in my district, a lot of them obviously are not equipped with smartphones or tablets, are still utilizing a WhatsApp number from their home country. So I would like to know if there is, um, a conversation around devices and making sure these emergency shelters are fully connected?
Yeah, I, I don't have information on that. It's certain that I think DSS would be best positioned to answer in terms of their assessment of the facilities that they're, uh, opening or, or using. So, uh, but we can have that conversation with them to assess the, the broadband infrastructure that, that exists there, but that, that.
And what about the devices piece?
Um, I'm sorry.
The, about offering, about providing, uh, devices for shelter residents, especially in emergency shelters at this point?
It's a good question, but one that I think we'll, we'll talk with DSS about to see what, you know, if they've determined a need there, yeah.
Thank you. Regarding small businesses, your response to supporting small businesses is a lot of that might depend on the internet master plan? Kind of like the level of support that are offered to small businesses? I'm concerned, because there's no start date to this internet master plan. So what is the plan to support these small businesses if we're telling them to fall back and wait for this internet master plan to take effect?
Yeah, and I would call back the, uh, the, the conversation about the information services franchises, because those are the companies that are building out fiber infrastructure to provide broadband to commercial and residential locations. And they're doing it, you know, in the normal course of their business. So that's happening every day. There's new permits for, for new fiber builds throughout the city, targeted for, you know, from big enterprise to local mom-and-pop, uh, commercial establishments. So all that is happening as we speak, and that's, that's just the normal course of our franchise administration. But, you know, to bring it back to the, to the master plan, there's, which is why we want to look at it very carefully, surgically, and, and precise to determine where we can help supplement those other efforts from the information services franchises, as well as the other broadband programs.
Thank you. Next, I'm going to call on Councilmember Julie Menon for her questions.
Oh, great. Thank you so much. First of all, I want to thank Chair Gutierrez, Chair Riley, for holding this incredibly important hearing. So about a year ago, I started working on a pilot program in my district to provide free, um, broadband NYCHA, uh, for NYCHA residents in the district. And we brought in a not-for-profit education superhighway, which is the nation's foremost expert on Wi-Fi. This really came out of work I did as a city census director, where I saw firsthand that a third of New Yorkers lack access to broadband. The program in my district has been incredibly successful. It costs no city money. We are signing up hundreds and hundreds of NYCHA residents. And due to the success of that, nine of my colleagues, including two who are here today, Councilmember Juan and Councilmember Botcher, are launching it in their district. So the first question I have is how much money, how much city money specifically is the city spending on Big Apple Connect?
Thank you, Councilmember. So Big Apple Connect is, when we submitted an RFP for the cable companies to respond to, for Big Apple Connect, that we asked that they come up with a low-cost proposal, and they both came in at under $30 per household. So until we expand the program, to figure out how many people are gonna sign up for it, I don't have necessarily a good estimate to provide to you. So it's gonna be $30, uh, sub $30 per household, times however many people and units sign up for it. With respect to ACP, I would note, again, we continue to support the program and we're really excited about it. For those who are enrolled in ACP and are getting the benefit monthly today, and if you also live in a NYCHA facility and your Big Apple Connect is available to you, you will be able to use that ACP credit towards your mobile wireless plan. So not only will you get the free internet and basic cable TV pursuant to Big Apple Connect, you can then apply the $30 ACP credit to your, your mobile cellular data plan. So we, we think that's a, it's a fantastic savings on, on the top of the, the great Big Apple Connect program so that you can get double the savings.
I just want to make sure I heard you correctly, being you're saying you're spending $30 per household?
It, it's just under, so it varies.
But I guess this, this sort of begs my question, which is why when there's a model that's completely free, that's scalable, where we negotiated with Verizon and with Spectrum to offer an under $30 a month program, we pair it with the $30 a month ACP? Why is the city spending any city resources on a program that we could be doing for free?
So ACP is limited. It's limited in terms of its funding availability. So just like any other program, it's, it's not gonna be around forever. But you do get the added benefit of having the basic cable TV service, and as well as being able to apply the ACP credit for as long as it exists to your cellular plan. So it, it, it's a good thing all around, we think.
Okay. I just want to express my concerns about that, because while yes, ACP is not around forever, Congress has indicated they're very likely to renew that. We know that. Given the fact that this program is only for three years and the city is going into a very difficult revenue situation with the budget, I mean, how, then you're signing up residents. We don't know what the future, I mean, what, what is gonna happen to those residents if the city runs out of money after, either before three years or after three years doesn't renew it?
It's a good question. And so we're continuing to plow forward. We, we recognize this immediate need to expand broadband access into NYCHA facilities. ACP has been a great way for folks to get affordable access to it. And we believe that with the addition of Big Apple Connect and being able to pivot ACP to other areas of their life and, and expenses, it's, it's just a, a, a savings all around that, that we just wouldn't get by ACP alone. So we do think that it's gonna have a, a true impact on folks, get access to them immediately. We've recognized the great work that the council has done on ACP promotion, and we, we encourage that and we continue to promote it on, on our, in, in our, in the city government. But having Big Apple Connect, uh, using, uh, the cable companies to provide the service and also apply their credits to their cellphone plan, it just, it, it's a win-win for us.
And, and the last question, are we gonna be able to see those contracts? Are you gonna be providing to the council with those, you're gonna get them? Okay, great.
Yeah, absolutely.
Next, I'm gonna pass it to Councilmember Brewer for questions.
Thank you very much. First, in terms of the contracts, cable. So I'm concerned by Manhattan Neighborhood Network and all the other providers, public access the city has. Where are they in the discussions? Because fewer cable, more streaming, less money for the public access. Where are we? Because they don't know and I don't know. So where are we with all of that?
Um, so with respect to, um...
I've been doing this work a long time, so go ahead.
Yes, I, I remember.
Oh, the questions I ask.
Definitely. So with, um, respect to the, the cable renewals, just keep in mind that there's no harm being done to the cable companies at, at this point.
But, yeah, but they, they get their money based on the subscribers.
Just with respect to their, um, the renewal of their franchise. So, um, while we're, um, kind of moving forward with, uh, the holdover status, we're also considering our options with respect to efficiently dealing with our cable renewal, friend, of the cable renewals for our franchises and having those discussions essentially closer to, towards the expiration of Verizon's cable franchise, which is in 2023.
Yeah, but the problem is, I mean, the cable, you can talk to the M&amp;Ns. I'm sure Stuart Schornstein will represent them well. But the issue is that they and public access, there are fewer people watching television and using cable. That's a fact.
So with respect to the public access, that continues with the, the term of the, the cable franchise, even in holdover status?
If they have less, uh, money coming in for cable, then how are those going to be considered? I mean, it's a fact.
That's something that we have to deal with during our negotiations.
I know, but I'm just bringing it up, because you guys didn't bring it up in your testimony. And I am considered about public, concerned about public access.
So as are we. We believe that, that the access is very important to the city.
Okay. Well, I'm just bringing it up, because I didn't hear you mention it. And I want people to know that they need their money, and they, they may not be as much, because ain't nobody watching TV except me. So I wanna know how they're gonna get their money. Okay, I'm just bringing it up. Number two, um, with the schools, I am concerned. I know that you're not the Department of Education. It's my experience funding technology in the schools. It disappears, the, uh, it's very nice to say there were lots of devices given out, but they're not all returned. And, uh, we could have another pandemic. But we also have, you know, if we could be more, uh, concerned and thoughtful about online studying with, combining with in-school, et cetera. People should have a device, particularly the young people who don't have the opportunity to purchase one, et cetera. So my concern is, where are you in terms of collaboration? Because now you're this big agency. I can never remember the name of it, because I'm still under Do-It. And the reason that the master plan didn't work is that the CTO and the Chair of, Commissioner of Do-It didn't get along. That's the real discussion. That's why it didn't happen. So my question is, with the schools, what are you doing in terms of collaboration? Because you can't just say they're doing something and we're doing something. What kind of real collaboration are you having on that topic with DOE?
So I would have to get back to, uh, Councilmember Brewer, um, with respect to that. I, I know there's, you know, that's generally with DOE, they, they make analysis as to what's best for their students and the families.
It doesn't always work.
And we'll continue to support them, of course. But we'll continue to support DOE.
Now, the, uh, libraries and schools have E-rate. So when I went down to testify at the FCC, they didn't want to hear about using the schools and the libraries as hotspots, so that people in the neighborhood could get connectivity. My question, where are we with E-rate? Because I should know and I don't. And have you had any discussions, if it exists in some kind of form, that those entities could be used as hotspots?
Thanks, Councilmember. So I, I don't have information for you on E-rate today, but happy to get back to you. And with respect to your second question, you suggested using like libraries for...
And schools. They both have E-rate, right? And you could, in fact, FCC had told me, you want Gale to have that be a hotspot, then you're gonna lose your E-rate. I think that was another Republicans. I can't remember. But the issue is, with a progressive FCC, we would like to have, I mean, we don't have municipal Wi-Fi in this city. I don't know what you call those kiosks. That ain't nothing. You sit there, you gotta have a bench to use. So I don't wanna hear about that being the municipal Wi-Fi. And nobody in Manhattan wants those tall things. You're gonna have a fight in your hat, half with all the community boards on that. Okay. So my question is, um, what we would like is for the businesses and residents near a library or near a school, both of which have E-rate, to make that the hotspot. If you go to a library today on the weekends, you see somebody sitting outside on a bench getting E-rate. That's what you see. So we'd like it to go further, and we'd like it to be official, and not me having to sit on a chair in the bushes by the library. Because that's what people do all weekend. You'll see them sitting around libraries. Okay. So that E-rate needs to be discussed. And then just finally, um, what's underground? What's, how are we, are we ever gonna find out what's going on underground? Verizon is terrible. Verizon is as bad as Altice is, as bad as Spectrum. I don't have any... They're all challenging, and working with them is challenging. So the underground cable, were we ever able to get a scenario as to what exists underground?
So that's a process that's, remains underway.
Been going on for 25 years.
We do have lots of maps of fiber infrastructure that's underground.
Yeah, but not all of them.
Uh, very many of them, and we continue to get updated information from those providers. So we do have a pretty extensive fiber map, um, from the, from the cable companies, as well as some of the other providers. So, yeah, we can, we can talk about that and share that.
And then just one quick, and then I'll stop. Maya Wiley sued Verizon. She also tried to get more, um, support for Wi-Fi in the developments. What happened to her plans? Um, I know she was supposed to do Jefferson for Manhattan. You only have one, Polo Grounds. We're supposed to do Jefferson also. What happened to the work that she did? Was it because it was poorly done? I know there was, uh, lots of challenges apparently with the companies that were used. What, what's the status with what she did?
I apologize, Councilmember. I, I don't know the status of that. But I would note regarding the Big Apple Connect program, Polo Grounds was just one of the eight of the pilot. But when we announced the expansion today, I believe it's 38 developments in Manhattan are, are gonna be made available for, for Big Apple Connect.
But Jefferson is supposed to be one of them.
I believe it is.
Okay. I'd like to hear also what happened with Gromen and what hap, with all of their infrastructure, you know, gazillion dollars worth of interest. Where is it with that gazillion dollars? And what happened to Maya Wiley's proposals? Thank you. I could go through more, but that's plenty for now.
Thank you, Councilmember Brewer. Next, I wanna have, uh, Councilmember Hanks. Oh, 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 wait, listen. Oh, I'm so sorry, Councilmember Juan. I, I apologize. Go for it.
Thank you so much. Good afternoon. I, I do share the sentiments of celebrating the speed of Big Apple Connect, but I also do share the sentiments with Councilmember Gutierrez, as well as Councilmember Menon, on this current contract for it, for the potential of ending within the three years. So for the details of the contract that we have not seen yet, can you explain what happens at the end of the three years in the case that it does come to an end and is not renewed? Will our NYCHA residents be able to terminate their contract? Or will there be an auto-renewal, and will they be faced with a $200 fee or, um, monthly bill that they were not expecting once the 000 disappears?
Thank you, Councilmember, for that. So at the end of the term of the contract, should it end at the three years, and I would note that there's, there's two one-year options for renewal at the end of it, but whenever it does end, customers or residents will be given plenty of notice to let them know that the promotion is expiring or the program is expiring. And they'll have an opportunity to sign up for whatever promotion is available to them at that time. They could choose to sign up for the additional service or cancel the service, return the equipment, and, and they'll be, uh, settled with the cable company. But that'll be incumbent on us to help with the awareness and outreach campaign to make sure that word gets out, ensure that the cable companies are proactively reaching out to their customers to make sure that information gets out there. But we have every incentive to ensure that they are offered some, the best possible price that's, that's available at that time.
Yeah, I wanna underscore that for the equipment that they are going to receive for free now, that there is thorough communication with the residents in the case that they have to return it so that they're not overcharged with fees or fines at the end of the contract in the case that it does not end up being renewed. And for right now, in my district, I have both Queensbridge Houses as well as Woodside Houses under the charter contract. For the auto-enrollment, for example, at Queensbridge Houses, we have about 65% of existing charter customers who are going to be part of Big Apple Connect. What has been the communications that has gone out to outreach to allow the residents to know that they have now been auto-enrolled into this program?
Yeah, so we have, uh, we've attended a couple of community council meetings with the local PSAs, the housing police, in the area. And those meetings, many of you know, represented by all the tenant association presidents in housing. So we've communicated what the program is, what, what it, how it works, how citizens can sign up. And we're gonna continue to do that. So there's gonna be onsite events, tables, tents, giveaways, sponsored by the cable companies in partnership with OTI to get out the word, get folks to come downstairs, sign up, go door-to-door, knocking on doors, put flyers up to, uh, extend the awareness of the campaign, uh, of the program. As well as updated our website with information of 301 has a script. So if folks have questions, they can call 301 and get up-to-date information about what the program is, who it's available to, and how they can sign up. who it's available to and how they can sign up.
I appreciate all the outreach that you all are doing because I've seen it on the ground, but I do also recommend that Spectrum Charter Communications is giving out per- is also doing the outreach on their monthly bill to allow the individual customers to be notified. Because with thousands of residents in my NYCHAs, they are not always, always going to the community events. And someone may be shocked if one day they do receive their bill and says zero, zero, zero. Has my term been, um, terminated or what are the issues here, which they may not fully understand?
Thanks, Councilmember. I, I should have mentioned that. So there, there will be postcards, there'll be emails sent to residents. It will be on the bill. It'll say why it's zero or why the bill went down. It'll be all very clear. We've seen samples of those invoices. And it's abundantly clear what the program is.
Okay, thank you. Then, um, for Verizon, as Councilmember Brewer has mentioned, there has been a lawsuit. And then we know that in two thousand nineteen, three years ago, Do-It announced an audit of Altis for overcharging our customers in New York City for broadband internet. Can you help me understand, uh, for the violation of the franchise agreements, has this audit been, audit been completed? And what was the result of this audit?
I don't have details on the audit. I don't know if, um, Council does as well, but other, I will get back to you on that. We'll look into that.
Because as the Chair of Contracts, I have real concerns that violators of certain, um, franchise agreements are continuing to get large contracts of this matter, especially when we have MWBEs who are dying to work with the city. And I also want to add that for Charter, um, for Spectrum, as you have said, Big Apple Connect is supposed to be complimentary to the Affordable Connectivity Program from the, from the federal government. If we are using the thirty dollars from the Affordable Connectivity Program for cellular devices or cell connection, we are physically seeing and we have heard, um, from our constituents that Spectrum, for example, at Queensbridge Houses, has turned away my constituents when they have come with an ACP Connect code saying, I would like to register for the ACP. And Spectrum has said, no, you don't need that. So I would like to make it clear that for these providers or these vendors, that we are having a clear communication with them saying that we want to do both. Because like you said, we want to have holistic savings and we wanna make sure that they are not only getting the free cable and Wi-Fi uh, from Big Apple Connect, but if they do already have the ACP code, we should be encouraging them to say, okay, Spectrum doesn't allow you to have cell service, but why don't you call your cell service provider, whether it be T-Mobile, AT&amp;T, or whoever else, saying, why don't you use it for that, instead of just telling them to throw out their code?
No, I, I appreciate that feedback and we'll work with the company to ensure that the proper message is getting out there, but.
Thank you. Um, I did have a few more questions, but overall, um, I'm, I'm going to ask for a follow-up on the Biden Administration's Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act. For the forty-two billion that is funding for broadband equity access and deployment program for our states of how much mon- how much of that money is coming to our city and how much of that is being used for Big Apple Connect, as well as, um, the American Rescue Plan as well. So I will follow up afterwards. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember. I just would quickly note on the IIJA, um, while I believe it's, the money is administered by the state, we have encouraged all of our franchisees, again, big and small, to, uh, apply for the grants that are available to them. So we, we have regular check-ins with the franchisees to make sure that, that they know that that money's available.
Also, I want to raise, um, a concern about cybersecurity. So the last time the city's wireless security protocol was updated was twenty fourteen. Is your office working with the Office of Cyber Command to issue updated cybersecurity protocols applicable for public Wi-Fi? Um, because I know that John Paul Farmer was doing that. And what is the progress in drafting these protocols? And when can we expect them? Do you mandate these protocols to be followed by the internet service providers like Spectrum and Optimum? Do you or will you audit contracted entities to make sure these protocols are followed? If no, do you plan to do so? Because I know that, like you said, there's a lot of distrust in our NYCHA communities because of how they have been treated in the past. And they have real concerns when I'm, uh, when we are encouraging them to register for ACP and Big Apple Connect on privacy. And they are one of the most vulnerable. So we want to curtail any sort of surveillance. Could you help us understand where we're at?
Yes, we're happy to look into that, to look into the, um, you were saying the protocol for public Wi-Fi through Cyber Command? Of course, we'll look into that and get back to you. You're welcome.
Thank you, Councilmember Juan. I apologize again. Um, I wanna, uh, pass it to Councilmember Hanks and then Councilmember Riley. Oh, okay, sorry. We're gonna go to Councilmember Riley right now.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, just wanna piggyback off of Councilmember Juan, uh, regarding cybersecurity. Uh, I think she mentioned something that's very important. Uh, when we're bringing programs like this to our communities, uh, we just wanna make sure that transparency, um, is available for them and for them to fully understand the program that we're bringing to them. Um, during our last hearing related to the IMP, uh, advocates testified that the biggest missing piece in the IMP and other internet-related city initiative is the lack of necessary details regarding privacy and cybersecurity protections. What cybersecurity and privacy protections do you currently require from the organizations applying to the RFP, if any? And would you consider talking more systematically, um, systematic actions to address issues relating to cybersecurity and data protections?
I think we're more than happy to discuss, um, anyone's concerns about cybersecurity and data protection. Those are, uh, essentially two large pillars of what is now part of OTI. So, um, I can get back to you with respect to, um, the cybersecurity-related, um, provisions to the extent that they currently exist. And then also, um, with respect to, I think, I believe earlier I talked about the, the Altis and, um, and Charter, uh, contracts having data protection provisions associated with them, so I can get back to you with that as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, next up, we have Councilmember Vicky Palladino with her questions.
Good afternoon, everybody. And I too wanna thank the two Chairs for doing this very important meeting. I also, uh, would like to say that whenever I hear the word master plan, it kinda makes me a little nervous. When I think of master plan, I think it's like a master plan. It's a plot. Uh, this has been put together since January of twenty twenty, correct? Under the de Blasio administration, correct?
I believe that's right, yes.
Yes. Okay. So, uh, also am I to understand that a hundred and fifty-seven million dollars was allotted through our city budget, correct?
I believe that's correct, yes.
Okay. We need to know the budget that's coming down from the federal government, as well as the state government. So so far, Big Apple, uh, are you, is this like a monopoly? Has anybody, how, how did you come about? How were you just, how was Big Apple decided about? And who is Big Apple?
Good question. Um, so Big Apple was essentially created by, the Big Apple Connect program, uh, was born out of the, the mayor and the CTO's vision that NYCHA residents in particular, but the city in general, uh, should not be without broadband service. We recognize the stark disparities in terms of NYCHA adoption for broadband service. And we sought to utilize our existing relationships with the cable providers who do have the infrastructure in place that can quickly turn on and activate service. Like I said earlier, it's not a major construction project, so it's not gonna take multiple years. We, we just don't have the time for that. Residents don't have the time for that.
So there was no, actually, uh, no request for bids or anything like that?
There were. There was an RFP that went out to those cable providers, the three primary cable providers in the city. Altis, Spectrum and Verizon Communications. Um, so the, they all, the three of them responded. We negotiated a contract, agreed between us and Charter, us and Altis, and they're building, they're currently providing the service. And then as mentioned earlier, we're continuing discussions with Verizon.
Well, I get a little nervous in a city of eight million or more people. Uh, NYCHA being key, front ground. This is a terrific program. But I have to agree with, uh, Councilwoman, uh, Julie Menon. When she brought up how well she's done this on a local level, I doubt huge, huge corporations are able to handle this unless it's broken down into a more local level. She quoted earlier, which I had no idea about, uh, and I'd like to talk more to her about this, that when we bring things down, and she's proven it, that it works. So when we get lost in all the weeds here, and this city is made up of many, many, many weeds, we never really get the job done. We see millions and gonna look like a billion, you know, maybe less, a little less here or there. I'm all about the bottom line. I'm all about the numbers and I'm all about delivering the services to the people. Now, when we talk about things, as Julie has spoken about, uh, I think we better think a little bit more about along those lines. While I, I wanna hold you, uh, I wanna say good job, but right now there's too many, too many questions to this. And for somebody that's been around since twenty twenty, we are now approaching the end of twenty twenty-two. I think we need a lot of questions answered. Another thing I'd like to say, this is thirty-some odd pages long that we got, you know, when I received this, three o'clock yesterday afternoon on a Sunday. Three o'clock. Now, this is how stuff doesn't get done. Because when you receive, like myself, receives thirty-two pages, this is how stuff gets passed without anybody knowing anything. That's not fair. The people have a right to know what's in these thirty-two pages. And while everybody up here is doing their due diligence to find out, we're met with a lot of unanswered questions. I, I really suggest, and this is a broad suggestion, that when we tackle something as big as this in the city of New York, that we do not receive notice at three PM on a Sunday afternoon so that we could be prepared for a meeting less than twenty-four hours later. This may never happen again. Thank you very much.
Councilmember, may I ask what, to what you're referring to? Can I back to that?
It's.
It's the Council of the City of New York.
Got it. Committee.
I, I realize that, but I.
Have to be critical of that. We should never have received this just twenty-four hours ago.
Thank you, Councilmember. Um, I'm gonna pass it up to Councilmember Holden. I just want a, a follow-up question because I wanna uplift the question that she asked about, um, the Big Apple Connect and the RFPs. Did I hear you correct when you said the RFPs were sent out to the three providers?
Correct.
Okay, exclusively, only those three were even able to apply?
Right, and, and the reason for that is we wanted to leverage their existing infrastructure, recognizing, again, they would be the quickest to be able to turn up the service, so.
Um, and we never saw those RFPs. Were those RFPs ever made public? Was the public, or is the city aware that there was an RFP, uh, solicitation while this was happening?
Um, I'll, I'll have to get back to you. I, I, I don't know to how that, the mechanics of how the RFP went out. I believe it was pursuant to a master service agreement, an existing master service agreement we have with the city, uh, we have with those companies. And this is an RFP based off of that, but I, we, we can get back to you on that.
Thank you. Councilmember Holden, your questions?
Yes, uh, thank you Chairs, again, for this important hearing and, uh, thank you for your testimony. Um, does the, um, in the, in the cable franchise agreements, does the city mention limits? Or do they set limits on price increases?
Um, unfortunately, um, Councilman, the, we cannot regulate rates for cable service. It's under the, uh, the Cable Act, the Federal Cable Act.
The Federal Cable Act does not allow us as a city to set price increases. So we're kind of sitting ducks, so, for some of these cable companies which have been raising the prices. So we can't set any, that's, that's a federal, you said?
That's correct. The, uh, the, the Cable Act of, I believe it's nineteen, um, uh, eighty-four. And it's in those provisions that they set certain limitations for local entities with respect to franchises regarding cable.
So, um, essentially these cable companies could triple their rates? And we're, we can't do anything about it as a city?
I'm not certain regarding, uh, what other types of controls there may be, but definitely not within the franchise scheme.
So the franchise agreement will just say they have to provide a service, right?
Well, the cable franchises primarily are about the creation and, uh, extension of infrastructure as we give them the ability to use the right of way. So that's the main focus of the agreement and then.
And who's checking on the quality of their service? Because when it comes to cable, especially if the cables are exposed, they're, they're on poles, like in my, most of my district, they deteriorate to a point where you don't get the service that you paid for or you're paying for. Who is checking that? Because they're not checking it themselves. The companies aren't checking it. And many times when I call about, you know, I'm not getting the speed, I'm not getting the service, I'm like, I'm getting you know, frozen TV, um, they, oh, that's because, uh, this, this pole, uh, oh, this needs to be, uh, upgraded. And every time I do that, it's, needs to be upgraded, they say. So they try it and then it lasts a, a couple of months and then it goes back again. And then I'm living with that. So we're, we're all, you know, who's doing, you, you're, obviously the city's not checking it, right? On their, on the, on the agree- agreement that says you have to provide this and maintain your infrastructure, right?
I mean, we do have the ability to, um, gauge, um, public concern and community concerns and interests overall with respect to, as part of renewing a cable franchise, but on a day-to-day scale, I'm not aware of who's actually.
I, ultimately, the, the carriers, the franchisees themselves are responsible for that. And I, I would point out that our legal authority extends to just cable TV provisioning. So where, where they also provide broadband services, that's, that, that is not under the city's jurisdiction.
Yeah, but I, I, yeah, but again, but nobody's, there's no oversight as to, uh, you know, are they providing what they promised? You know, that, that's what, where we need some kind of oversight from the city, I would say, right?
So our cable television franchise unit regulates the cable portion of those, uh, companies. And we do periodically receive complaints from, from individual members of the public regarding their cable service or even.
Okay, but there's no, there's no spot check. Is it like, let's say, let's see what we're getting here. Let's see how well your infrastructure is maintained. But let me get to another, um, you know, on my, um, uh, my intro one twelve, um, do you have any issues with the bill, you know, the way it's currently written?
So I, yeah, and I, we, I heard at, at the outset, um, a little bit more about what, you know, you're thinking in terms of that, the, the bill. Um, what I would notice, and you referenced this earlier, we do have our franchise agreements posted on our website.
I know, but.
We're gonna continue to expand about, uh, expand those, redesign our website.
You have the current agreements, but you don't have the older ones, um, which I think we could, we could compare it if we had the older ones on there too.
Sure, we could look at putting archive.
Yeah, because I, I really would like to know what, you know, but I'd like it summarized. I don't wanna go through, you know, I don't think anybody has the time to go through fifty, seventy-five pages. I would like it broken down. I think that would be a wonderful thing to have a website and we can compare and you could say, oh, this is what this one's providing. This is what that's providing. And this is what, you know, this one's providing. This way we can compare it very easily. And, and again, to, to the layperson, not somebody who's going, you know, a contract lawyer, have to go through this and come through it. Because we, we tried. I have, my staff tried. We couldn't find things. You know, we have to search and search and so, nobody's gonna do that. So let's make it, I think that's where you, you guys come in, come, break it down, make a chart. Let's, let's compare the contracts. And I think that's, on a website that we could look at and glance.
Let us take that back and.
All right, thank you. Thanks so much, Chair.
I just wanna piggyback off of Councilmember Holden. So the city doesn't have any infrastructure to, uh, kinda see what the service providers are, if they're actually providing what they're saying they're providing. Because I know, uh, for one, um, in my community in the Northeast Bronx, I know majority of the members in Co-op City have Optimum. Um, and they haven't been very pleased with the services that they're offering. Um, especially, uh, in my area, uh, when it comes to broadband services, it has been a weak signal for the last two years. Um, and when I'm calling Optimum myself, or Altis, excuse me, myself, uh, they're sharing that this is happening. Um, they're not really giving me any reason why it's happening. So do we have any power as a city or any jurisdiction, um, to kinda see if they're providing the services that they're saying they're providing? If not, um, I think we should figure out a way that we could kinda give some more oversight over this. Because if we only have three providers, then we don't really have that much, you know, options. Um, and they're charging us, uh, a very hefty, you know, weight, so.
Thank you, Chair Riley. Um, so all of our cable franchisees are required to provide the services that they're actually required to under their franchise agreement to their, to the citizens. Um, to the extent that they're not or the service is down, obviously they're, they have an incentive to ensure that the infrastructure is improved. Um, mentioned earlier that at least one of the cable companies is converting their COAX, the legacy, um, copper service to fiber and upgrading the services, which we should see an improvement in service there. But this really goes back to competition. If there's just a single provider in a borough or, or at a particular location like Co-op City, um, having an alternative to the legacy, uh, cable provider is key to keeping them on their toes and giving people options.
Thank you, Chair Riley. Um, I have a question about, um, I have a question about, um, the developments that are currently part of, of Big Apple Connect with the understanding that it's going to continue to grow and that there's other developments. Can you, it, can you talk to, um, any of these buildings? Because they're, I, these are not all in my district, about any of these current aid or the ones that you're looking to expand in, being part of RAD or PACT, um, which is, uh, the, the city's process to, for ninety-nine-year lease, it, the developments will no longer be under NICA management? Can you speak to a little bit about what those conversations, what those decisions are to include those, uh, developments into the Big Apple Connect? And how has communication changed? Because you are no longer working with NICA to, for example, uh, designate Wi-Fi hotspots. You're now working with a management company and a developer. So, if you can speak to those, uh, examples?
Yeah, thank you, Chair Good Years. So, with respect to this initial announcement today for the hundred and twenty-seven developments, I don't believe any of them are the RAD-PACT developments. So, as you acknowledge that they're not managed by NICA directly, they're managed by third parties. So, we'll have to take a look to see how those can possibly be enveloped into the program. But because of that complexity, because they're not managed by NICA, those were not in this initial, uh, initial round. So, we'll, we'll go back with NICA and see if there's opportunity.
So, your total numbers, um, I don't know if they were part of your opening testimony, but about connecting NICA residences, tho, those include tenants that are part of the RAD and the PACT program? Or just the one hundred and twenty-seven developments?
Just the ones that were announced today, the one twenty-seven.
Okay, and can you speak to what are the conversations? Because every development has a different management company, so it is, it is a rather, I assume, a complicated process. How are you all engaging with those management companies in those developments?
Well, the, the ones that are part of Big Apple Connect, so those are.
No, the ones just in RAD.
Oh, I'm sorry, so, so the, the ones that are in RAD and PACT were not included in that?
Right.
So, we, we haven't, we haven't had that dialogue. That's, that's really for NICA to have with their, you know, managing partners. So, we haven't had that conversation. So, we're focused solely for now on the developments that are managed by NICA.
But for the developments that are not a part of Big Apple Connect that are maybe covered under RFEIs, will those include developments a part of RAD?
Uh, I, I'll have to get back to, I don't believe they are part of RAD. So, the ones that are being serviced by an RFEI vendor today, fairly certain that those are not part of RAD, that they're just NICA managed.
Okay, um, I'm concerned in my district, Hope Gardens is one of those RAD developments that are also served by Optimum. Same, same concerns shared with councilmember Riley here. I understand that it's probably just the easier lift to work with NICA in these instances, but these are folks that in many instances tenants did not ask to be converted into RAD, are kind of being strung along in this, like, process. And I think are probably just, even probably more vulnerable and do need access to connectivity. And I'm also concerned, if I'm hearing what you said correctly, that you're really leaving in those instances the conversation to be had between NICA and those particular management companies. Has anyone known NICA to be great communicators? I'm concerned that that is the strategy. I'm going to pass it next to councilmember Juan for follow-up questions.
I have a few follow-up questions about the two bills. But before I start on that, I had a question on, in regards of the monopoly that people are asking about. So, when we're doing bulk registrations or for Big Apple Connect, if the idea is that one provider will be contracted an entire NICA unit, like Queensbridge Houses or Woodside Houses, then what do you foresee as a mitigation, uh, strategy that OTI will be doing to make sure that in three years from now, that other providers, smaller ones that were there, for example, RCN, that they are not starved out and they are eliminated from the competition? So, that if, if in the case that three years from now, um, Big Apple Connect is not renewed, that our residents still have options for their internet service providers?
Yeah, thank you, councilmember Juan. So, that, it's a good question. We, we do hope, and tie it back to, oh, competition and expanding the marketplace, we do hope that there are multiple providers that, over the next two, three years, one, two, three years, uh, we expect that there will be additional providers to, to choose from, rather than just going to the standalone, the cable company, right? So, our expectation is that we'll continue to grow, um, the, the market and, and give people choice.
And can you just clarify that even though right now, um, Altice or Optimum has Brooklyn and the Bronx contract, and Spectrum has the Queens contract, that the idea is not to have these providers have contracts for the entire borough of NICA's, but each NICA in the boroughs can have different contracts with different providers?
Just so I understand you clearly, you're saying, so, because as we all know, Altice serves part, you know, two-thirds of Brooklyn, entire Bronx, charter the, the remaining boroughs. So, they were given as part of their contract, the service area that they already cover, they were given the ability to build out to those NICA or, or provide the service to those NICA developments within the borough that we've designated, um, and announced today. Are, are you asking for anything beyond those? Because the, Altice wouldn't provide service to a charter territory, they just don't have the infrastructure in place for that.
Okay, so, what you're saying is that you are opting to contract with the provider that is most prominent in that, in that NICA unit, correct?
Yeah, so, there, there would be two providers. It'd be Altice in their service territories, Charter in their service territories. In some cases, Verizon has about ninety-plus percent of the city, so they would be the secondary. But Altice and Charter wouldn't compete, they just don't have overlapping territories.
Okay.
I'm sorry, if that.
Thank you, that, that helps. For intro four forty, what implications do you anticipate in adopting the idea? And do you have any questions? And if you have any issues with the bill currently written, um, what are your issues?
So, four forty, um, with the wireless service, we, we do have questions and we'd love to follow up with your office line. But I, initially, clearly, there are, there are significant operational and, and fiscal considerations that we must analyze, uh, given something at this scale. So, and, and, uh, council can, can also concur about se, security implications as well. So, th, those are our primary concerns, but we would like to hear more about what you envision, how this would work, who it would be open to, um, would it be a managed access, uh, network, managed by the city, a third party, those types of things.
Okay, well, definitely follow up, but just to summarize, um, for example, a public school or a public library or a public hospital, there are incon, inconsistencies in accessibility to their Wi-Fi network. Even if they have a public Wi-Fi network that can be used and it's paid on taxpayer dollars, if I walk into a certain hospital, some hospitals will allow me to use their internet and some won't. And then you have public, other, other public spaces that have internet access but do not allow public usage either. So, we'll follow up. And then for five ninety-nine, do you believe that DOE has staffing and resources necessary to carry out the goals of this legislation? And if, and do you currently have any issues with this bill?
I wouldn't say we have issues, but it's something we would have to discuss with, uh, DOE to determine what they're, you know, what they believe the need to be is, what the feedback they've been getting from, from students and their families in terms of the, the, the at-home needs, and we can continue to dialogue.
Yeah, we have one more bill also on, um, regarding three-one-one providing information on the ACP, Big Apple Connect and others. Because we, what we're seeing is that we now have a state program, a federal program, and a city program to provide free internet to our residents in New York City. Yet, what is missing or the dissonance that we have is the understanding or awareness of the programs on how to sign up for them. So, I would love to hear if you have a strategy overall at, at OTI on how you're going to raise awareness to make sure that our residents, especially the most vulnerable, are getting connected while they already have the ability to.
Yeah, certainly, we agree that the, the more information, the better. My families make the decisions that are best for them. And I do know, and I don't know if I mentioned this earlier, we have provided information on ACP through backpack letters that were sent home with students over the, over the, at least the last year, year and a half. Um, and we can look at ways to continue to do that.
Thank you, councilmember Juan. Next up, councilmember Brewer.
Thank you, just picking up on NICA. Are you going to do some kind of a survey for those that are using any of these programs to see if they are effective? Just because I've been hearing the same NICA story for thirty years, right? So, I'm just wondering, are you going to do any kind of an evaluation or assessment?
Yeah, we can do a, we could certainly do a more formal assessment, but.
A formal?
As, as we get, you know, as we're on the ground doing a very grassroots kind of outreach campaign, speaking with the community, with, with the tenant association presidents, we want to know what works and what doesn't, and that's part of the, really, the, the master assessment.
Outside evaluator from CUNY, for instance, do that work?
It, it's a good suggestion, we can, we can take a look at that.
Okay, because I would really like to see that. With all due respect, I've heard it before, I don't know that these, any of these programs are going to work. I have to be honest with you, okay? Number two is three-one-one, you heard from councilmember Juan. I'm also suggesting three-one-one not only provide information, but I'm suggesting, and I'm putting this in a bill, that it provide training, that we have an outside group. Because this is great to set up all of this, who's training people how to use the services? Are you doing that? No. So, my question is, you need, if we're going to be a society that knows how to use internet for education and jobs, et cetera, I need training. So, I have some suggestions for that, but I just want to let you know, you got to use more than putting hardware in somebody's. And then along those lines, Verizon. I don't care whether, I don't even know what that Bronx group was. Altris, I've never heard of them except from other places, because they're not Manhattan. Spectrum and Verizon are. Neither, none of them are great, they're all terrible, to be honest with you. So, the question is, but some residents seem to prefer, I have both, they're all terrible. But the question is, with Verizon, residents prefer them. So, you're only talking about two companies, and you're not including Verizon because they're the toughest negotiators. Are they going to be part of this program or not? Because residents want Verizon, I'll tell you. I want Spectrum because I like Errol Lewis. But, but for Verizon. Right, I am perfectly clear, right into the microphone. Spectrum, Errol Lewis. And I say to Verizon, you don't have Errol Lewis, so too bad, you're terrible. So, the question is, but this, residents want Verizon. So, is it going to be part of this program? I mean, are you just going to say maybe, maybe for the future?
Well, they're still in the midst of negotiations right now.
I know, I heard that.
So, we have to consider the fact that, you know, there, there is a cost associated with, um, each of these transactions. So, it's a balance between what the city needs and wants to pay for, and also what services we can get, and how much Verizon is loved by all.
I'm just telling, this is, there's residents like, the other thing is, at some point, somebody doesn't pay their bill. In the past, Spectrum would cut them off from any program. This is not the first program for NICA, just in case you didn't know. This has been going on for years. This one, that one, the next one. So, is that going to be an issue? In other words, will there be a situation where somebody doesn't pay any bill at all? Or is that not relevant because everything is free?
So, the city is billed directly, um, for the services. So, the, if you subscribe to just the, the internet and the basic cable TV service, you'll get, as a resident, you'll get a bill that says zero on it.
Okay.
To the extent that you enhance your services.
More services, right.
HBO and, and other, you know, uh, premium services, you will get a bill for that incremental portion.
Okay, if you don't pay that, you'll still be able to keep the program that you're suggesting, the Big Apple Connect.
That's correct, yeah.
Okay. That's going to be a problem. Thank you.
Thank you, mem, thank you, councilmember Brewer. I, well, have a couple of follow-up questions, um, just to uplift councilmember Juan's questions about the, the funding and the specificity of it. Can you please, um, share with us how much of the projected cost is coming from allocations made from the previous year? I know you, you, you did share with us that the initial, the initial capital allocation, um, from FY twenty-twenty-one is untouched, which I think is a hundred and fifty-seven million. Can you please just specify, um, the current cost, where it's coming from? If it's coming from federal dollars, state dollars? I just would love to have you share that.
Yeah, it, my, my understanding is that the, the cost of the program is being paid by a, a budget line that is to be established by OMB. So, there'll be a budget allocation for it, so that hasn't been finalized, is my understanding. And just to clarify, on the master plan money, I believe that money, the hundred and fifty-seven is being held at EDC. It was always under an EDC budget line. But with respect to how Big Apple gets paid, Big Apple Connect, um, that, that's yet to be determined in terms of how, like, the, the funding source, and that work, that gets worked out with OMB.
But if it's, if it started, um, just last month or two months ago, how is that being, how is that being paid for?
So, that comes OTI, we get invoiced, they send the bills to OTI, and OTI through its normal, uh, invoice-paying system would pay those, would pay those bills. As the program gets expanded, we're going to work with OMB to designate a, a funding source.
Sure, and, um, I think this is, my next question is, depends a little bit on the amount of outreach and engagement that OTI has made. What is the projected cost in these developments? Because it sounds to me that it depends on how many units sign up, right? And again, to councilmember Menon's point, you're really doubling down, you're really duplicating something that already exists. I think it's ironic that the, the agency is trying to avoid duplication by holding off on the master plan, by putting this new initiative together, but it, it sounds like it already exists. So, I just want to have a sense of, um, kind of where, where that is. Because it doesn't make a whole, it's not very clear to me, um, on that piece.
Yeah, so, the, the estimates are, again, it's completely re, dependent on how many people sign up for the program and how many people, when the cable companies start billing OTI for it. But it, it may be in the neighborhood of around thirty million dollars per year for, to support the program.
I'm, I'm sorry, say that again?
It may be in the neighborhood of around thirty million dollars per year.
And will we expect the same process, um, every year of waiting for OMB's line item in that, uh, bu, of that out-year budget to be able to understand how much the project, how much the, the costs is?
Uh, no, I, I think that'll be established, but this is at the very beginning stages of it. So, it, it's a more administrative task than anything.
Okay, um, my next question is regarding intro two forty-one. In your opening statement, you mentioned, um, that to your knowledge, all students likely have access to, to hotspots and internet access. I cannot confirm if that's true. The DOE hearing, it was still very kind of messy what the DOE's response was to us. We had that early in this year when all the hearings were COVID-related. So, I just want to give that back to you that we don't know if that's real still, and we're in September. But I also just want to uplift the fact that last year, the, last week, the chancellor made an announcement about no more snow days. Every student will be expected to sign on remotely. And that is a concern of mine, if we are not equipping families, if we are not equipping students with the appropriate device. And you saying that, I, I think they're supposed to have it. I can tell you for a fact that either, A, parents don't even know about it, and the amount of families that our districts are, are now taking because of what's going on at the border, there is no guarantee that these families will be equipped with hotspots. Or to councilmember Brewer's point, will even have, uh, the, a capacity to understand how that all works. So, besides that, what is the key issue of that bill? Because I think it is key that we codify this piece, that we cannot wait and depend on the DOE to kind of figure it out o, on their own. So, what, are there other concerns that you all have with this bill?
Obviously, you know, providing access and, and giving people the, the tools they need to, to compete in, in school and work and, and all that is essential to what we do. But ultimately, that really is a DOE call in terms of what they, how they communicate this to their families, uh, to the students and their families, and what feedback they're getting. So, we'll continue to support them as necessary, but it, it's really something I think DOE is, is better poised to answer.
Okay, um, I think next we have councilmember.
Yeah, just, just a quick, um, uh, question and, um, observation on the cable agreements. Last time around, about four years ago, I want to talk about Verizon because they were mentioned in a positive light. But Verizon did, four years ago, eliminate, eliminated support for the copper wire. That's the old phone lines, um, which many seniors use, even, even today, they, they were using it. So, when, when, when a franchisee cancels a service, they should be able to, there should be something in the contract that, that they prohibits them or has them notify customers in writing. Here, here's what happened, and we had a hearing on this. Four years ago, co, you know, like I said, Verizon decided to not support copper wire anymore. They were going to, everybody had to get the phones through their cable or, you know, their, um, their Wi-Fi. So, they, they called some customers. Now, if they, they called my mom, who had, she had the old-fashioned phone and the, the buttons phone, but it was, it was on the pole, the wire, copper wire, and it was very reliable. They decided Verizon eliminated that, but never sent out a notice in writing to the customers. Now, when you call seniors, by the way, and you call somebody, some, you know, in their nineties, and, and you're asking them to do something, they're not going to listen to you, usually. They're going to hang up, which I directed my mom to do. Anytime somebody calls wanting something, hang up, because it's unsolicited and we don't want that. We don't want seniors to get, you know, fooled and give out wrong information or information that's sensitive. Verizon didn't, and I brought this up at a hearing, Verizon still did not make good on, on notifying customers that they were eliminating a service. So, what, what happens? My mother's phone was cut off, and I didn't know it because I, I lived in the same house. So, I didn't know that she was cut off for a month and a half. And nobody could reach her. My, my siblings finally said, you know, I can't reach mom. And that's how we knew that they were cut off. So, it needs to be, you know, in, there needs to be language in these agreements that you have to notify customers if you're eliminating a service on them in writing. And, you know, whether it's in their bill or any, but it has to be done in a separate mailing. So, I, I just caution you on that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I believe that there are, um, consumer protection provisions in the, um, the cable franchise agreements now, but I'll double-check with respect to the notification provision.
We, they did, they did the same thing to senior centers, by the way. Because, uh, Tish James was at the hearing when she was public advocate. That's how, that's when this would, happened. And she said that, that was going on throughout the city of New York, but yet, nobody did anything. And they weren't made to, made good on notifying anyone. So, that, again, that needs to be in, in the lang. So that, again, that needs to be in, in the language of these agreements. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilmember Julie Menon.
Thank you so much. I really want to build upon what Chair Gutierrez asked. So you're spending thirty million dollars on this program, on Big Apple Connect. Why are you doing that when there's an alternative that is free? And did the city survey what other cities are doing as to whether or not they are fully using an ACP plan that pairs with a low-cost alternative and not putting in municipal funds?
Yeah, thanks. I, I don't know that, I can't say that we surveyed other cities in that regard. However, you know, just to bring it back to what we talked about, this is all about giving residents of NICA and potentially other residents throughout the city expanded access to, or accelerated access, I should say, to broadband services. Yes, ACP is available, it's a great program. We internally may have some questions about the longevity aspect of it. But the fact that we can add cable TV to it and have them apply it to their cell phone plan, you know, it, it's almost a, a logical solution to be able to give them the broadband service and give them the savings on their cell phone plan, and give them the choice. It's really about doing that. So if a resident, you know, likes their existing service and wants to keep the ACP benefit, they don't have to enroll in Big Apple Connect, they can opt out of it. But otherwise, it's, it's made available to everybody. It goes to the center of where we have adoption issues, where folks who are just not signing up for service for whatever reason, affordability or awareness, and we are able to control that process. We are able to go into the developments, sign people up, and ensure that they know that this program is available.
So what I would say, my office did survey other cities. We actually reached out to all major other cities to understand what they were doing before we put our plan together. I am not aware of other cities that are doing anything like this. They're basically using the federal funds that are available through ACP. So again, I just want to express my strong reservations on this and why we're spending thirty million dollars on this. Thank you.
Per year. Thank you, Councilmember Menon. I have a question, then we're going to pass it to Councilmember Wong. What is the agency's plan for a website dedicated to the Internet Master Plan? I know there is a PDF that exists. I think everything that we shared here today is vital, but the irony of this hearing about internet connectivity is that it's possible folks wouldn't even be able to join us virtually even if they wanted to because of their lack of connectivity. So when can you tell us, or what can you share with us about making updates to the master plan, even if it's just conversations available to New Yorkers? Like I shared in my testimony, there were a ton of advocates that were really in support of a master plan finally existing for the city. And as it stands right now, they're left with very little information in kind of twenty-four-hour notice about an announcement regarding Big Apple connectivity. And if that said website could also potentially include notifications and updates about how you are all engaging with these MWBEs, I would love to know who are the MWBEs that you are engaging with that have applied. I, I don't believe that we've, we've gotten that. I know you're going to get back to us, but I think it's crucial that when we have a, an administration that is saying, like, yeah, we care about MWBEs, that we also be transparent about who they are. There could be MWBS on our backyard that might not even, that want to be connected. And I just, I need to understand from you all how that outreach looks. And I think that needs to start with the website. So can you share any information about what that plan looks like and how much information you will all be posting to that Internet Master Plan website?
Yeah, and in the spirit of transparency, we can create a website and provide that information. But I think the, the first step is that, that kind of holistic analysis of the entire landscape of broadband services, how the Internet Master Plan plays into that, how it can maybe be modified to surgically and target areas that are needed the most, and we can, we can make that information available as, as evolves.
I think also it should include these new initiatives. I know you shared that you're having conversations, there's not a lot of detail that you shared about what these other initiatives are. I'm dying to know what they are and what they look like, but I think we need to start there. The website needs to include that. I'm going to pass it to Councilmember Wong.
My last question today is about customer satisfaction. I want to make sure that there is some sort of feedback loop put in place for, for all of the contracts, all, all the contract providers for Spectrum, as well as Altice, and then Verizon in the future, because we know over and over again, as we're hearing from our colleagues all throughout the city, the current providers, as is even without Big Apple Connect, are having connectivity issues, maintenance issues, and pure negligence, especially in the NICA's when it comes to repairs and being timely for when systems are down. And I just also want to raise, in addition to Altice having the overcharging violation for our franchise agreements, that Spectrum or Charter Communications has also been under scrutiny for union busting as well, which also goes into the issue about pricing. We do know that every ISP has its flaws, especially the large corporations, but we do know that Verizon does have a very strong union presence, which leads to higher prices. So I'm just wondering how the contracts are going to be negotiated with that in mind, knowing that some of the providers can provide cheaper, cheaper pricing because they are not allowing their employees to unionize.
I believe for, for each contract, we do take into consideration like the landscape that exists. So I'm certain that it'll be taken into account with respect to the negotiations that will take place with Charter, Altice, and with Verizon when the time comes. And also, just with respect to your concern about more customer satisfaction, you know, information, in the contracts that you receive with respect to both Altice and Charter, there are provisions in there, like a service-level agreement, which indicates like a minimum threshold for customer services. So you'll, you'll see there that there are standards available, and, and we'll capitalize on those standards in the future.
Are there currently metrics in place for adoption standards to see how high the adoption rate is per NICA for these pilot locations, as well as customer satisfaction, to ensure that the programs will be successful?
Yeah, so certainly, our goal is a hundred percent, right? We want to get everybody who's eligible to sign up as quickly as possible. So we, part of the pilot was to analyze how quickly folks were signing up, what the interest was, what their hesitancy was, and, and really understand what the root cause of that was before we expanded to the, the hundred and twenty-seven, now hundred and twenty-seven developments. So we're going to continue to do that. Like I said, we're going to have folks on the ground, and we're communicating with the tenant association presidents, and we'll better assess how it's being received by the public. And if there's any concerns, we'll, we'll, you know, adjust accordingly.
Could you also clarify, the thirty million dollars per year in spending is for the pilot programs right now? Or for the expected cost for citywide for every single NICA?
Yeah, so ju- just to clarify, and, and I do want to correct something on the record. The number that I provided, that, that dollar figure, it's still part of the ongoing evaluation in terms of how it's going to get paid, and it's not a line item per OMB. So we, as we deploy this program, as folks sign up, we'll continue to evaluate the cost and the effectiveness of it holistically, you know, in, in terms of not just the operations of it, but the finances of it.
Okay, so that's, so thirty million dollars is not just for the pilot programs, but it's for citywide?
Again, not to tie it to the thirty million, but in terms of the hundred and twenty-seven developments that were announced today, and then the additional developments that may come thereafter, that's just the, kind of the ballpark that we're talking about.
Okay, thank you.
Before we go into testimony, just have one more follow-up. So, and, and this is, Councilmember Wong alluded to this earlier. So any of the funding from the American Rescue Plan Act, Emergency Connectivity Fund, can you share with us how that money is being utilized? Just so that we're clear, of those funds that exist either federally or statewide, how is the agency using them to further, not necessarily, not specifically for, for Big Apple Connect, but just in general, how are those funds being utilized? What is the, the plan for them? Are there conversations about these funds being, being utilized for the Internet Master Plan use? I think it's important for us to just know, like, we, we, we need long-term goals. We're not, obviously, we're not ready to, to share with those, how we're going to execute them, but how are these funds coming into play?
Yeah, so I don't have information available on that. We'd have to get back to you, but that, that's probably better directed at OMB to, you know, disclose how federal funds and state funds may be allocated. But, yeah, so we can get back to you on that.
Okay, thank you. I think I'm going to pass it off to Irene now, excuse me. And I also hope that you can stay, our advocates have been waiting for a long time, virtually and here in person, to, to testify, so I hope that you can test, stick around.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you very much for your testimony. We have concluded testimony from the administration, and now we'll turn to public testimony. And to accommodate everyone, we ask our witnesses, witnesses to limit their testimony to three minutes. And our first panelist will be Stuart Reed and Patrick Joseph. Mr. Reed? You might begin when you're ready.
Okay, good afternoon. Members of the New York City Council Technology Committee, all elected officials present and attended virtually, and guests. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak about broadband and equal internet access in, in New York City. My name is Stuart Reed. I am the co-chairman of the Smart Community Initiative, Inc., TSCI. TSCI is a 501(c)(3) not-for-profit partnership of public housing resident leaders and veteran New York City-based community technologists who have come together to help improve the quality of life of our residents. The members of the Board of TSCI are Ms. Ethel Velez, TSCI co-chair. She is the NICA Manhattan North District Councilor President's Chair and President of James Weldon Johnson Houses. G. Douglas Frazier, TSCI Chief Innovator and Founder, Chairman and Executive Managing Partner, Digital Divide Partners. Nathaniel Green, Vice Chair, NICA Manhattan North District Councilor Presidents and President of Dykeman Houses Resident Association. Carlton Davis, Previous Recording Secretary, NICA Manhattan North District Councilor Presidents and Previous President of Grant Houses Resident Association. Steve Burke, Digital Divide Partners. Dr. Kofi Boateng, CPA and Former Executive Director of the West Harlem Development Corp., and myself. Ethel Velez, in her capacity as co-chair of the Smart Community Initiative, introduces TSCI as follows. Over the last seven years, I have worked with a digitalized partnership, a local community technology group led by Douglas Frazier and Stuart Reed, to utilize broadband technology to help improve our communities. Frazier and Reed's work goes back to the early nineteen nineties, when they were the first minority-led group to acquire and develop a fiber-based, citywide broadband franchise, when most people had never even heard of the internet. The Smart Community Initiative's purpose is to create a self-contained technological ecosystem that uses technology to address our problems and challenges, including increasing and improving our knowledge, self-reliance, public safety, and quality of life in our public housing communities. While our technology partners have been providing both fiber-based and wireless low-cost and free broadband applications, services, and access in Harlem and the South Bronx for almost two decades, the Smart Community Initiative has been providing wireless broadband services and applications to three public housing communities in East, Central, and West Harlem since early 2020. In 2021, TSCI was certified in the FCC's Emergency Broadband Benefit Program, now the Affordability Connectivity Program, or ACP. We believe that TSCI may be the only resident-led internet service provider to be certified by the federal government's ACP program. TCI... Can I conclude? Okay. I've got so much here to testify about. I hope that the council members will actually read the testimony. But just in conclusion, as, as a resident-managed not-for-profit certified by the federal government to provide ACP service, TCI is uniquely qualified, experienced, and committed to continuous work bringing free broadband applications and services to our public housing communities. We ask that the city council do whatever is within its powers to help ensure funding that will enable the expansion and continued success of our efforts. Thank you. And by the way, we're one of those small ISPs that was selected in the city RFP.
Can you, oh, I'm so glad that you're here. I was actually going to ask you, Mr. Reed, and I will, I will read your testimony. Can you explain, can you tell us a little bit about what the application process was like? I'm very curious. They did not share a lot of information.
It was grueling. It was a formal application process. They broke it down into three work streams, actual building of the technology, operating the technology, and then providing services to the end users. We applied for all three, saying we had a holistic approach to provide service to the residents. We have experienced building networks, operating networks, and providing service. And our whole plan was to, is to train residents. We've been doing it already for, for years, but to train residents to actually install and operate the networks. And we thought that was really unique and, and important. One of the things that we've learned is that residents need to have control and ownership in the technology in their communities. So often outsiders have come in, making all kinds of promises, and we, we know where that leads, empty promises. Helps their bottom line, but at the end of the day, it does not help residents. So in addition to the training component, which is extensive, we believe that the applications and services on the broadband are really the driver, because just dropping the broadband on for folks who don't have any experience using it, it's like, that's the reason that broadband adoption is so low in public housing in many of our low-income communities. So we have developed with residents, applications and services that they help us develop that speak to their needs, speak to their needs about public safety. We have broadband walkie-talkie services, where residents are reporting daily on what's going on in their buildings, with the heat, with the hot water, and with the elevators. Vital services in every public housing development. We created public, rather, community-based radio stations in public housing developments where residents can come and tell their stories, have conversations, invite in experts, all this running over the free Wi-Fi network. So we talked about all this stuff with the city. We laid it out, they loved it. One of the other things, we also have sensors where residents are able to monitor temperature, heat, and humidity, and air quality in their developments over the Wi-Fi network.
Amazing.
So we're teaching the residents to put those in and to monitor them, and figure out what they mean, and to report on them. So again, the applications and services, we believe, are, are maybe even more important than the underlying service. You've got to have the underlying service, but what do you do with it? How do residents use it? How do they use it to empower and improve their lives? And that, that's what we believe the real magic is in all of this. So we applied to the city, we went through the RFP process, we went through a grueling, many, many zooms and, and back and forth, and we were selected.
And can you just clarify, you applied to the RFEI?
No, we, no, we did not apply to the RFI. We applied to the RFP under the Universal Service Program.
Okay, and you got selected.
We got selected. We were one of, I think, eleven of...
And this was what year roughly?
It was 2021.
Okay.
And they made a big public announcement in October of, of last year. I have the press release, I can certainly share that with you. We were selected, the Smart Community Initiative. They have a quote from Ethel Velez, a quote from myself, talking about how excited we are to be selected. This is the hundred and fifty-seven million dollars.
Mm-hmm, for the master plan.
Yeah, for the master plan. We were selected as one of eleven providers. And then when the new guys came in, we heard, oh, that's been put on pause.
Truly, yeah.
And even though I heard some lip service that, oh, we're talking to people, nobody's reached out to us, we haven't heard anything.
Thank you, Mr. Reed, for your testimony. This was crucial. We will be following up with you. I really want to learn more about how this organization works. I think it's phenomenal. I think we really should be coming at all services, community-centered, resident-focused, and it should really be about empowering folks. I appreciate it. Thank you for sharing your experience.
Okay, thank you.
Next, we have, we have Mr. Joseph. Mr. Joseph, you might begin when ready.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today on the issue of broadband and equal access to the internet in New York City. My name is Patrick Joseph. I'm the policy analyst at Community Service Society of New York. It's a nonprofit that's working to eradicate poverty in New York. Since 2002, CSS has conducted a public opinion survey of New Yorkers called the unheard third. Every year, we use the insights from that survey to elevate the concerns of low-income New Yorkers. In 2021, recognizing that the COVID-19 pandemic had moved work and schooling into the home, we asked New Yorkers a battery of survey questions related to Internet access. Based on our survey results, we learned that the pandemic exacerbated existing disparities in access to broadband technology in myriad ways. I'll send a link to the full report, but I'll highlight three of our findings here for the hearing. First, households in the Bronx were the most likely to report difficulties with Internet access at home when compared to other boroughs. Almost a quarter of Bronx residents reported that their household lacked home Internet access in the past year. For comparison, that was double the share of homes in Brooklyn and Queens. Additionally, one out of every four residents said that they had an inadequate number of devices at home to access the Internet. Our second key finding was the prevalence, was related to the prevalence of the digital divide and how it impacted folks trying to climb the economic ladder. For residents in public housing, for example, they experienced even greater setbacks than the rest of New York City. We found that 40% of New Yorkers were prevented from completing online schooling due to lack of Internet access and working devices. Nearly a third of our respondents said it was a barrier to online job-related training. And nearly half of public housing residents reported these challenges kept them from completing online education, job training, or telehealth visits. Lastly, we looked at the relationship between the pandemic and the education system. And we found that parents in New York City are deeply concerned about their children's education prospects. Nearly 65% of low-income parents surveyed said that the impacts from the pandemic would have a long-lasting setback on their child's education. Among low-income parents, staggering 74% of Latinx parents said that the pandemic would have long-lasting setbacks for their children. So considering these findings and the necessity for Internet access for modern-day education, work, and life, we believe it's time that we find a path toward a free municipal Internet. Internet access should be a public good. We shouldn't see it any different from parks, roads, and streetlights. Cities in the U.S. and around the world are already trending in this direction. And some countries, like Estonia, for example, have already made this possible for their whole country. We believe there's no reason for New York City to fall behind on this front. We also have three recommendations. I know my time is up, but I can say them quickly if you'll allow it. So first and foremost, while we're working towards getting free municipal Internet for our city, we think there are things we can do through an equity-focused lens to get us closer to closing that digital divide. First and foremost, it's the Bronx. We recommended starting a municipal Internet pilot in the Bronx. Of course, that was before this announcement. We dropped this report a couple of weeks ago, which again, I'll send to the council. But, you know, it's beyond NYCHA. We believe that the most equitable approach would be to start in the areas that have the highest needs and directly challenge those inequities there when it comes to Internet access. To the mayor's credit, they have been installing those Internet kiosks in the Bronx, but as Councilmember Brewer suggested earlier, right, they're hardly a replacement for having high-speed Internet at home or when you're on the go. Second, is related to the announcement that was made this morning about NYCHA residents. I keep hearing the word affordable, but we really believe that we should have free Internet access for our NYCHA residents if we're going to really make a dent in some of the problems that I previously stated statistically. Again, nearly half of respondents in public housing said they had difficulties accessing job training, online schooling, and telehealth because of issues with Internet connectivity. And lastly, for public school students, it really should go without saying that we just need to provide students with the devices they need, Internet access, et cetera. But also, that should be recorded. The public needs to know how far along we are going to meeting this need. As you mentioned earlier, there was a form of this during the pandemic, but even by the DOE's own calculations, they had fallen at least 2,000 devices short of their goal during the time when it was needed most. So in conclusion, I just want to say that we at Community Service Society, we believe strongly that the issue of Internet access should be resolved if we are to create a more equitable city. We believe it's time to become a more modern-day society. And thank you for having this hearing on a very critical issue. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Joseph. Please do share the CSS's report. I think it would help support a lot of the bills that we're trying to introduce today. As you can tell, we were met with a ton of pushback from the administration, saying it's not really real, like what we're feeling on the ground and what our communities are feeling. And I think your survey certainly uplifts that argument. So please do share it. And thank you for sticking around for the testimony.
Absolutely. Thank you for having us here.
Thank you again, Mr. Joseph. And our next panelists are Julian Klein and Annette Tomlin. Mr. Klein, you might begin.
Hi, good afternoon, council member. My name is Julian Klein. I'm the head of policy at Tech NYC, a nonprofit organization representing roughly 800 technology companies in New York. We work with government and community partners to foster a dynamic ecosystem so that New York remains the best place in the country to start and grow a technology company. Equal access to broadband and the Internet is a top priority for us. The need for universal Internet access became even clearer during COVID-19 as remote learning and working became our new reality. According to data released prior to COVID-19, 29% of New York City households and 1.5 million New York City residents did not have broadband at home. Better access to the Internet will lead to improved education outcomes, expanded employment opportunities, more profitable businesses, and stronger connections with family. New York City has recognized this need and invested in it, including Link NYC's new 5G kiosks, which are currently being installed throughout the city and will provide free public Wi-Fi at extended distances, providing connections for families without Internet. In addition to Link NYC kiosks, the city must utilize existing infrastructure to extend free public Wi-Fi to residents and visitors. Tech NYC supports Intro 440, which would require city agencies with secure public Wi-Fi capabilities to expand Wi-Fi for the surrounding public. As for expanding access at home, one of our most effective tools is the Affordable Connectivity Program, which offers a $30 discount for broadband service to low-income residents. Similarly, most broadband providers offer a $30 monthly option, which results in households that qualify for government subsidies to receive no bill for Internet service. Tech NYC supports Intro 599, which is aimed at increasing awareness about affordable Internet programs and helping students and their families get enrolled. To increase participation, we recommend that the city coordinate with the established Internet service providers since their enrollment processes may differ. Intro 241, which would provide mobile Wi-Fi hotspots to all public school students, is also an exciting proposal. By issuing hotspots, students will have increased access to the Internet so they can complete their assignments and stay connected with their teachers. Tech NYC recommends that this bill includes issuing LTE-enabled computing devices as well. New York City DOE is already a provider of connected tablets and computing devices, including those which can be pre-programmed with educational software. This will improve connectivity and ensure that students have the tools needed to log on and complete their assignments. Thank you, and we look forward to working with the council on bridging the digital divide.
Thank you. Thank you for your support and your suggestions.
Ms. Tomlin?
Can you hear me now? Okay, thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Annette Tomlin. I thank you for this opportunity. I am a vocal leader for the Homeless Union's union. And today, I'm here to represent the underdeserved. And we need high-quality, universal Internet for all people, not those who can just afford it. Having universal Internet would give us safer, cheaper options and ensure that no one is left disconnected from their communities. There is a fund, plenty of fund, excuse me, federal funding assets that would help build this $1 billion Connect All for federal funding. $150 million franchise fees collected in New York City, city-owned infrastructure. The Internet is an essential need and right now is divided between the have and have-nots. Verizon, Optimum, and Altris are predators. We have been forced to pay high prices for slow services or either services that don't exist. In 2020, there was supposed to be a huge Internet master plan. Where are those investments? When the city abandons investments for technology, it also abandons black and communities, black and brown communities. I was just basically listening to the testimonies that the gentleman had spoke about with the Big Apple. And it's unfortunate that even when we look at doing this here, okay, we need to Zoom. So we understand the importance of actually having the Internet service. I come from an era where we just had basics, okay? And again, like I said, I'm kind of old-school. But with the new technology, everybody basically needs this here. It's essential, okay? People that are in shelters, when we had to go speak to our doctors, okay? Everything was from Tel Aviv, you know, everything. And without having that quality speed, you know, you can't do this here. And it's impossible to actually stay connected. So I ask for you all and as well as the public to continue to just fight for this here because it's definitely needed. It's essential. And I thank you for the opportunity to speak today. Thank you.
Thank you, all panelists. And our next panelist will be Anthony Riddle.
Thank you for waiting for me to testify here. I know it's been a long afternoon. Okay, well, I won't take all that. My name is Anthony Riddle. I'm the senior vice president for community media at Brick Arts Media in Brooklyn. We're the public access provider in Brooklyn. Brick, through Brooklyn Free Speech, would like to offer support for the discussion of each of the three pieces of legislation that we're here today. We favor establishment of a cable franchise agreements website. This would make it much easier for the five community media centers that operate under side agreements to the current franchises, which include Brick, BronxNet, Manhattan Neighborhood Network, Queens Public Television, and Staten Island Community Television, to keep apprised of current franchise renegotiation process. We are important partners to the city for organizing strong community support in its upcoming cable franchise negotiations. For decades, Brick and the New York City Community Media Centers have been the leading providers of access to the technology that has bridged the communications gap for young people who would otherwise be left behind. In fact, during the lockdown, we provided technical support and distribution for the Department of Education in each of our boroughs, facilitating daily classes on our cable channels provided by the cable franchise side agreements. We support the provision of hotspots to students and stand ready to provide the technical support and training needed to make them effective, not just for individuals, but for communities and for groups of people to be able to gain the kinds of services that they need. Finally, we support providing Wi-Fi connectivity to communities that would otherwise be left behind. Again, New York City's community media centers look forward to providing training for the end users and the vision to raise this wonderful idea up to its full potential for bringing the beauty of our individual voices into a choir of tremendous harmony. New York's community media centers look forward to working with the Committee on Technology, the Subcommittee on Zoning and Franchises, and with OTI to keep New York a national leader in community-based technology. And I'd just like to add one answer to one of the questions that came up earlier, which is that we think it's good that the franchises have been conformed to ending at the same time. We know that this has put us off about three years from when they should have been negotiated before. And for the most part, that's not a bad thing. But one of the things that has been hurt is the fact that the city would normally do a technical audit of the systems. And so when there were complaints about whether the systems work properly or not, this would be the kind of thing that would be uncovered in preparation for the negotiations. And because we're not in negotiation, we haven't done those kinds of surveys. And therefore, frankly, a lot of customers are receiving substandard services. It's not the cable company's fault, you know, because they're in business, they do what they do. It's our responsibility to check and make sure that they're delivering the services that they're supposed to. Again, we're here to be a partner for you. We have a lot of experience in negotiating the franchise agreements. And you're welcome to call on us at any time.
Thank you, Mr. Riddle. Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you, Mr. Riddle. And thank you, all panelists. And now we turn to our witnesses online. And our first witness is William Luckman.
Hello?
Starting time.
Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Good afternoon. My name is Will Luckman, and I'm a Brooklyn resident in the 36th district. I'm also currently enrolled at the City University of New York Graduate Center, where I'm pursuing a master's of science degree in data analysis and visualization. I just want to thank Chairperson Gutierrez and the rest of the council for calling this hearing today. And I'm grateful for the opportunity to discuss city's efforts to bridge the digital divide as well as my research into city spending on telecommunications infrastructure. So as part of my testimony, I've submitted a research project that was completed in fall of 2021 using publicly available data from the city comptroller's office along with other data made available through the NYC Open Data Portal, as well as complementary research. I was able to illustrate that the digital divide in New York City, who has high-speed and Internet access and who does not, is largely a question of income. I was also able to illustrate that as a matter of policy, city spending and franchising telecommunications over the past decade has been a complete disaster. In New York City, there's an almost one-to-one correlation between low median incomes and low rates of broadband adaption by zip code. That's not a coincidence. In New York City, the provision of last-mile in-home Internet service is dominated by a big three of four-profit companies, Verizon, Optimum, aka Altice, and Charter Spectrum. And the need to make profits off Internet service provision instead of providing it as a public utility reinforces the digital divide in two ways. First, high prices mean that services are unaffordable to many New Yorkers. And secondly, even if some residents can afford service, the providers may decide it isn't profitable for them to build broadband infrastructure in neighborhoods where most can't pay. These big three ISPs have yearly revenues in the billions of dollars. In New York, they have to pay their franchise fees that we've heard about today. I found that these fees are quite small compared to the revenues that these companies are generating. And there have also, as has been mentioned earlier today in other testimony, there's been a number of seeming violations of the franchise of the big three, including labor disputes, lies about coverage areas, coverage speeds, failure to be billed out where they said they would. The city or state has had to take legal action against all three of these major providers. And despite this, the franchise agreements have been renewed or extended currently, as we've seen. And it's worth noting that the city seems to be taking the same approach with Link NYC. You know, they didn't meet the demands of their original agreement. They didn't build all the kiosks they said they were going to. They owed the city $10 million. And now the city seems to be doubling down on contracts with the Link NYC consortium due to the new 5G rollout. So it seems like problematic from a policy standpoint. But yeah, possibly more egregious than the lack of enforcement and renewal of the franchise agreement.
Time expired.
Okay, just wanted to follow up on two points and just say that in terms of Intro 112, from my research, it would be very useful to have quarterly reports included in there. So apparently, the franchisees are meant to submit quarterly reports to the city on their revenues and coverage and other things like that. Those don't seem to be publicly available. I tried to find them online. I couldn't. I reached out to do it personally and couldn't. So if you could add that into Intro 112, the holding legislation, I think that would be a good addition there. And also, it just seems like, from what we've heard, $30 million a year, just going back to the big three, seems like a core use of city funds when you could be reinvesting that in publicly-owned infrastructure. As Mr. Joseph mentioned earlier, it seems like a public, legally-owned municipal system would be advantageous. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Luckman, and thank you for sticking around. I look forward to reading your... I look forward to reading your project. We just came across it now, and we'll be discussing it with my team. Thank you so much.
Thank you again, Mr. Luckman. And our next panelist is Rebecca Miller.
Starting time.
Hi, good afternoon. Thank you so much for having me here to testify. My name is Rebecca Miller, and I am the New York State Legislative Director for CWA District One. Communication Workers of America District One represents workers in the private and public sector who work in telecommunications, IT, news media, broadcast, cable television, education, healthcare, public service, and the other fields. This includes 15,000 employees in the telecommunications industry in New York State. CWA members are highly-trained career technicians and service representatives who build and service our telecommunications networks. They are also consumers who rely on quality internet service. CWA is deeply committed to ensuring universal access to high-speed, high-quality, and affordable broadband, as well as good jobs in the telecommunications industry. We know that access is a combination of both actual technological infrastructure as well as affordability. And unfortunately, three decades of deregulation have left policymakers with few tools or sufficient tools to ensure universal access. So, city and state governments have relied on competition rather than regulation to meet their goals. This has led to the digital divide. It has meant higher investment in more profitable areas. It has left too many New Yorkers behind by allowing broadband companies to pick and choose where they want to service with high-speed fiber access. So, in many communities, we know that this has created essentially a cable monopoly, resulting in expensive and inadequate service for New Yorkers. From listening to the testimony today, I do not think I need to go through the importance of addressing the digital divide. Surely, this should be a priority for our city, and to do that, it is important to understand that we need to address both the technology side and the affordability. In New York City, we believe that affordability is the main concern. And as the pandemic revealed the enormous toll that the digital divide was happening, the federal government launched the ACP. There's been a lot of discussion today about the ACP. We have been really pleased to see how the ACP has been used in the city. So, we have been working to ensure that people can actually get connected through the ACP and enrolled into the internet, as this is a no-cost solution for the city. And it can happen today. It's an immediate free solution to the digital divide in New York City. So, unfortunately, this program has not been utilized to the fullest extent. We see estimates of about a quarter of eligible Americans taking advantage of the program, and that's why we've been partnering with council members and with nonprofits to get New Yorkers enrolled. So, in a model spearheaded by Councilmember Julie Menon, who spoke earlier, and in collaboration with Education Superhighway, we've supported and imparted efforts to enroll and connect from start to finish. I would just say, in conclusion here, that we have a number of these events coming up. We are deeply supportive of this effort. Again, this is, Councilmember Menon paved the way by getting providers to create these high-quality plans for less than $30, so the subsidy completely covers the cost of the service. And together with community organizations, if the city puts resources behind the actual enrollment process, we can really make sure that this program is fully utilized, again, at no cost to the city. And then the final thing I'll say is that, in addition to ensuring that we close the digital divide, we cannot leave behind workers. It is vital that we remain committed to closing the digital divide while maintaining good jobs in telecommunications industry. We know that New York is a union town, and we encourage the council to prioritize good union jobs in the industry as they address these issues. Thank you so much for your time and allowing me to speed here.
Thank you. That was, we got all of it. Thank you so much, Rebecca.
Thanks, Ms. Miller. And our next panelist will be Andrew Kennedy.
Starting time.
Hello. Can you hear me all right?
Yes, we can.
Great. Good afternoon. My name is Andrew Kennedy. I'm a volunteer organizer with the New York City Democratic Socialists of America Tech Action Working Group, which is a member of the Internet for All NYC Coalition, which is fighting to establish a publicly-owned municipal broadband provider to make sure every New Yorker can access education, healthcare, and other essential services online. Thank you, Chairwoman Gutierrez, for helping put this hearing together today. I'm extremely grateful to have the opportunity to highlight steps that the city council can take to move beyond handouts too and an increasing reliance by the city on the failed public-private partnerships with the monopolists ISPs, Charter, Altice, and Verizon that created the dire internet access status quo in the first place. Providing immediate access to New Yorkers lacking internet is no doubt the city's number-one priority, but continuing to write blank checks to the monopolists is shortsighted and alarming given their long history of broken promises, horrible service, anti-labor and privacy practices, amongst other concerns. In New York City, we have an opportunity to establish municipal broadband utility to ensure the provision of high-quality home broadband to millions of New Yorkers lacking access and improve the service for the millions more New Yorkers that pay way too much for terrible service. Hundreds of municipalities across the country have shown that by breaking free from a singular focus on the subsidized public-private partnership model and establishing a municipal internet utility, they were able to provide faster, more affordable, more transparent internet service. To start, the city council should pass a local law requiring the city to provide a high-quality, free-and-low-cost, future-proof broadband connection to every New Yorker by 2026. With that requirement in place, the city can establish a city-owned internet utility to provide the universally-available service that meets the characteristics required by the initial piece of legislation. The money's available between federal and state funding, like the 1.4 billion in New York State Connect All funding, franchise fees from the private ISPs that can be allocated to network, and maybe even the 157 million in internet master plan funding that the city is holding hostage. The infrastructure is also available to build the network, including city-owned networks, infrastructure and call centers, and those estate partners like the New York Power Authority. The city can also introduce reforms to its franchise agreements and enforce and audit existing and future franchisees to hold them accountable and effectively utilize their infrastructure and public rights away. Not only will establishing the public network help bridge the digital divide and improve city service, but by doing so, the city will create good union jobs and provide an alternative to ISPs like Charter Spectrum and Altice with a very long history of union busting and other anti-labor practices. A union network would also improve public safety because only a union network with a long-term preparedness mindset, free from short-term investor demands, can place user privacy and ongoing network resiliency against the worsening effects of climate change at the center of its strategy. New Yorkers, in short, deserve a broadband network that prioritizes residents and workers, not profits.
Time expired.
Has it within their power to make the public network a reality. The time is up to now. Thank you so much for giving me the opportunity. I really appreciate it.
Thank you so much, Andrew. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Our next panelist is Leo Atson.
Starting time.
Good afternoon, Chair Gutierrez. My name is Leo Atson. I am the former state president of AARP New York, which counts approximately 750,000 members of 50-plus here in New York City. Thank you for providing me with the opportunity to testify at today's hearing to discuss how disparities in broadband access have impacted the well-being of older New Yorkers citywide. Older New Yorkers are one of the fastest-growing demographic groups and represent 13% of current population and are estimated to grow by over 41% by 2040. As New York City's population becomes older, government leaders need to address the challenges of access to affordable, high-speed internet and digital literacy. Pre-COVID-19, too many older New Yorkers lacked access to broadband. The pandemic required transitioning to online platforms, and without access, many are disconnected from home-delivered meals and grocery deliveries, telemedicine, scheduling vaccine appointments, and more. They have struggled to remain connected to their family and friends. Further, many do not have the necessary technological literacy or access to training programs. As the city council and Adams Administration begin to address these problems, AARP urges the city to expand its investments in high-speed internet infrastructure. Additionally, we recommend that the city council pass legislation that would require the city to release an annual progress report. AARP recommends that the mayor and city council also allocate more funding to older adult centers to improve their technology facilities, and AARP urges the city council and mayor to make meaningful investments in service providers who offer digital literacy training to serve more clients and improve overall digital literacy. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today.
Thank you so much, Mr. Atson. And our next and final panelist is Cassie Keith.
Starting time.
Hi, my name is Cassie Keith. I'm the leader of Vocal New York Homeless Union. I want to thank Councilmember Gutierrez for having this hearing. Today, I'm here to represent those that are living in New York City homeless shelters with no internet access. We need high-quality internet, universal internet for all people, not just those who are housed. And the reason why we need internet in the shelter is because New York City is no required to provide single-adult shelter internet service. And we need internet service for daily health visits, for therapy sessions, for job search and job training. And in my case, I have a medical device implanted, a heart monitor that require Wi-Fi to transmit data and reports to my doctors, including a CPAP machine that reports to my doctors. And I wasn't able to do so recently, and it created a huge amount of problem because the doctor were not able to receive anything. And then, we also have the ACP program. I want to talk about ACP. ACP is really unreliable. Could they provide device, like I have a device right now that it was provided to me by ACP program? And after five months, the device stopped working, even though I was using it every day for searching for everything. And I'm not the only person, or the residents have the same issue. And they have, residents have to provide houses such, every week they have to give to the CAT monitor a number of houses and such. And they can't do it with reliable devices. And we have data that tell us that ACP is some device provider is unlimited data, but after using a certain amount of data, let's say 10 gigabyte, it starts to slow down, and you're no longer able to receive, either you have a low Wi-Fi frequency or you have absolutely slow internet access, and you can't do anything. And so, in the case of where they give you a free device, like the tablet, but after five months or so, they tell you you're going to have it for four years, but after five months of using it regularly, internet stopped, no service provider whatsoever, and you can get it back, connected back. And the thing is, once you have the device, you cannot sign up for another device because you already show in the system that you have a device, but you have a device that is not working. And so, this ACP government program that they, you know, they give to people who...
Time expired.
Also unreliable. So, I want to thank you for, you know, having this hearing and can look into it and please help us have internet service in the shelter, in all shelter, not just family shelter, but also single-adult shelter, including women and men. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Keith. Thank you for your testimony. Can I ask you a question? What, can you, do you mind sharing what provider you work with under the ACP program?
For my phone, it was, I have, I have Switch now. I had, what do you call that, for all rely on, what do you call it? Right now, I have SafeLink. And the phone, like even today, I was going to the doctor. I stepped outside waiting for my access to ride, and the phone dead. No, I can't even call, couldn't make a call. I had to shut down. It was the second time this happened. And the previous, the previous provider is the one that everybody use, oh my God, I'm sorry.
Don't worry about it. If you do find it, you can email it to us.
And this tablet, this tablet was given to me, you know, those people, the thing is, there's no office where you can go into to sign up. They usually sign you up on the street by the street station, or, yeah. And so, they sent me off with this device, and after it stopped working, it shows that it was powered by T-Mobile. When I contacted T-Mobile, they told me no, because it's a Sky device. But T-Mobile was, told me there was only power, but they have nothing to do with being the provider. To find the provider, I had to contact, what do you call that? The ACP program. And they told me, even when I give the, what do you call that, IMEI number, no one can find who's the provider. When they give me the number of the provider, it's not them. I can't find who's the provider to connect me back.
Oh, wow.
And so, I'm stuck with a device that has no internet service unless I use a Wi-Fi or, what's my point? I cannot, or, I can't even get, I'm trying to sign up for another device, and it shows, oh, you already have a device, but who is the provider? No one wants to take, you know.
Thank you so much, Ms. Keith. This was really, I'm really glad that you testified. You have a lot of questions, a lot about ACP programs, so thank you for raising that here. And we can, you can always, if you have any more questions or you need help, you can email the same email you used to sign up to testify.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much for your testimony. I want to thank all panelists. We do not have any more witnesses in person and do not have any more witnesses registered online, and that will conclude our testimonies. And I'm going to turn to Chair Gutierrez to adjourn the hearing.
That's right. Thank you to everyone who testified. Thank you to Anna and Anya, my team. Thank you, Irene. Lot of follow-ups. Have a great day, everyone.